Oh, it's time.
One o'clock?
One o'clock. Catherine, you good?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the 2021-2022 City of Farmers Branch Budget Retreat. It's Tuesday, August 10, 2020. The time is 1:00 p.m. You know, we have council members in person, as you can see, and if you're joined by Zoom, just wanted to clarify in what shape or form everyone's committed to our city impact on basis of location. As far as I'm concerned, everyone's present, engaged, and ready to do the work. You know, we have two full days of great discussion ahead of us. We're going to be receiving a lot of information and brief on the nuances of the budget, so don't be afraid to ask questions and get clarifications on points you may not understand, or you just want some more information. As I think all of us did, all of you should have received the budget, the presentation materials, which I think have been updated on your iPads, as well as in your books, and outlining our agenda for the next few days. You know, I am excited for this budget. Charles, our directors, and especially our finance team, have taken our strategic priorities from late January and built a pretty incredible budget. We can thank you all for your time, energy, and focus over these past five months to prepare and address our strategic initiatives in this budget. There are several things that are gonna get done, just on a high level. Investments in roads, biennale, parks, branch connection renovations, comprehensive citywide plan, you know, police and fire, not only improvements within some of those facilities, but more officers as well. But, you know, several of these investments that we're gonna make make a substantial impact on our community and continue to set up our city for long-term pay-as-you-go stability in several areas. However, I believe we need to rethink a few of the things that have been presented in this budget, and as of right now, I'm not in favor of reducing the tax rate. I can always be persuaded later, but I think we do have a unique opportunity to invest in ourselves the right way, to protect the longevity of our community. I'd like to see us add an additional $700,000, $750,000 to our street improvement fund, which should sustain us for years and not require us to issue more debt in the future. This would put us ahead of the pre-law suit improvement dollars that eroded our street fund and forced us to issue $23.5 million in debt, which will probably be approximately $30 million today. So, this will be true pay-as-you-go and represent a future tax group, tax decrease, once that kind of debt rolls off. And so, you know, having those funds in place to maintain everything on an annual basis going forward, I think puts us in a very good position, not only today, but as we look out into the future. I think we should add half of the remaining dollars, which I estimate to be $150,000,000, to our Economic Development Fund, to allow our team to help not only the state area, but the four corners, chase the right kind of uses for these areas in and around our city, and help prolong our demo rebuild fund. We're seeing the results from the work we did with our restaurant park, and I think that having the flexibility to make similar investments in these areas of focus and in businesses that are important to our residents is vital. I think the remaining funds should be allocated at parks, to help revitalize our parks and prepare for new ones as we build out the city. We're currently gonna provide a signature park and add a park on the west side, but I would like us to focus in on improving the planned park at the stationary as we're reviewing that kind of, you know, planned development, both with the group that we are considering for our development partner. I know that they had put a park in there. It's gonna take some work. I think we can do a lot better and provide something that's truly groundbreaking for that area and will help not only development, but keep people there engaged and active. But, you know, I also wanna take a look at doing Farmers Branch Park, potentially working with Dallas in the future years to build an interfreeway park between I-35 that runs along the trail, just to provide and show off the entrance to our city. I believe there's an opportunity to leverage, or show off our city, you know, because as a city in the park, I think, you know, if we enter the city, if we have a grand park there, maybe it's something that just shows us off in a much better light, something that can go the west side and the central part of our city. But, as we continue to invest in our parks, I believe there's an opportunity to leverage grant federal funds, take these dollars even further in the future. Organizations that provide this type of funding, look at entities committed to funding projects and making improvements, and this type of programming would definitely exhibit that commitment. So, you know, in my opinion, investing in these areas are gonna spur new development, new business opportunities, and grow our base for the future, because the new development will temper, as we know, but it doesn't have to temper as quick if we invest in the right areas in our city, if we put our money to work the right way, and continue to build on our recent success. You know, as a, we're not a 4A, 4B city, so we don't get all of our sales tax, and because of that, we have to be smart. We have to work within ourselves to continue to drive growth while taking care of the important things in our city, our infrastructure, our parks, and our amenities, and protecting our residents and making sure that it's affordable to live here, but we have what anyone would ever want. We'll spend the next few days diving into this budget, definitely asking questions to understand our impacts, and what other opportunities we have for Farmers Branch as we continue to move forward and continue to trend new focused development in our city that will help build a better future for all of us. So, you know, with that, that was just some high-level thoughts. Just appreciate everyone's time and effort, you know, being here, not only in the city council, but definitely the staff, but I'll turn it over to Charles. Let him lead it off and introduce the budget that he and his town put together.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. I recently heard the Dallas city manager, when he kind of provided an introduction of his budget to the Dallas city council members, and I think his opening statement was, "This is the greatest budget that you're gonna see in your lifetimes." I'm not sure I can make that grand a statement, but this is pretty darn close. This is a incredible opportunity that this budget presents, between the development that is occurring and the economic recovery that's also occurring, combined with the American Rescue Plan funding, gives us really an opportunity to invest a significant amount of money in the city's infrastructure. And, you know, infrastructure can, is kind of a vague word, but, I mean, essentially, with the proposals in this budget, every city facility will have either been built brand-new, or will have had a major renovation, you know, within the past 10 years, 10 to 12 years. And so, it's fairly significant that we will be having that level of investment in our infrastructure. The proposed budget provides a return to a level of pay-go street funding that we had back before we were involved in the illegal immigration lawsuits, and that was a, back in those days, the goal was to have $2 million per year for street maintenance, to be pay-as-you-go, and this budget returns us to that level. It's taken a while. We have pay-go throughout this budget, not just in streets, but in water and sewer, stormwater utilities, which is creeks. We have built and proposed what I believe is a very sustainable budget, a budget that will not need debt in quite, if you look at, say, 10 years, unless there's some, something new and discretionary that council's interested in, I don't see us needing debt for a long time, which is, which is a good thing. And I know that our residents in the past, and during past elections, they've also indicated that they have a strong preference for pay-as-you-go. So, this budget marks a significant return towards that. The, one of the things I wanna point out, it's gonna be a change for discussion, and kind of connect with what the mayor was saying about his thoughts about not going down on the tax rate decrease. The main reason that there's a tax rate decrease in the, my executive summary, is to, that was, at the time, and there was a footnote that said, "We're waiting on Dallas County to come back with final numbers," and the main reason we were recommending the decrease was because of the 3.5% state caps that are in effect. What Dallas County pointed out is that last year's calculation gave us essentially 11 cents' worth of room on that 3.5% cap. And so, effectively, because of last year's property tax calculation, which, it's a long story as to how that was done because of COVID and the appraisal district only certifying half of the roll, but effectively, that gives us 11 cents of wiggle room that will still keep us under the 3.5% cap. Obviously, no one is recommending to go up 11 cents on the tax rate. However, the, the, the need to decrease the tax rate is not, that is, it was initially proposed, that's not a requirement of state law, and that there is some flexibility there if council wants to go that route. And we'll talk more about that, but in terms of, two things I wanna point out, street maintenance dollars, I mentioned, we've been trying to get back to the $2 million level. That's the level we had pre the illegal immigration lawsuit. Costs have changed. It's a higher number now. If we want to have a pay-go for street maintenance that will kind of keep up, remember, we have a lot more streets, too, if you look at what's happened on the west side. Yes, they're brand-new, but at some point, they're gonna need to be in the maintenance cycle. So, we need a higher number than $2 million. Same thing with parks. Some parks, the Parks Master Plan, when it was adopted by council, there wasn't a funding source identified. And so, there is, there is, you know, amount of money that is necessary if we're going to fund that Parks Master Plan, that, that if we want to fully fund that, there's an opportunity here. So, we'll talk again more about this, probably mainly when both parks and Public Works make their presentation, but I just wanted to throw that out there, that the tax rate reduction that you initially saw was based on information we had at the time. That information has evolved. Of course, the tax rate is up to council's prerogative as to what you want to adopt, but I wanna let you know that it's not, you're not capped at that level by state law. There's, there's room to move up. The, you know, this is the first of a series of meetings we'll have about the budget. It's, it's a lot of information. Officially and formally, we have four council meetings, two in August and two in September, where they can be discussed. We can have, please be aware that you're not tied to that. If you want to have a budget meeting every day to talk about the budget, we will make that happen. So, please, you know, at the end of the day, council needs to be comfortable with this budget and understand this budget. And so, if we need to have lots more meetings, we can schedule those. Just let us know. But officially, there's only four meetings, four formal council meetings, between now and when the budget's recommended to be adopted on September 21st. And with that, that's all I have in terms of opening remarks. This would now be a time for Ben to do critical business outcomes, unless, unless you have anything you wanted to mention before. Just keep on going?
No, we can just keep going.
Okay, all right.
Is Mayor Bobby still?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, good, keep going.
Oh, one thing before, before I, before I hand it over to Ben, one thing that I do wanna mention is that there's a lot of opportunity, again, with the growth and the economic recovery. Along with that, is that I wanna make sure that, as we all know, the population in our city has grown, and it's grown fairly rapidly. And if you look at the latest census numbers and the latest census information is we're at 51,000. We'll see when that's trued up, when the final census comes out in about a month or two, hopefully. The, I'm really proud that we've been able to hold the line on, on personnel and expenditures, and we've done that in many ways by, I think, working better and smarter. We've also contracted out a number of functions of the city, and we've done a really good, and we've also tried to, when, when needed, will strategically use contract personnel versus full-time personnel. One thing you'll note in the budget is that there's a proposal to add nine new full-time positions, about half of which are public safety. I just wanna let you know, that's the most new full-time positions that I can remember being recommended. There's, at some point, there is a correlation between population growth and number of people, especially when you're talking about public safety. Again, I try to pride myself on the fact of, and my staff, I think, will shake their head at this, is I generally do not like to hear requests for new people, because I usually ask, "Can we do something smarter so we avoid having to have people?" We're at that point where, you know, when you come close to doubling your population in a fairly short period of time, we're kind of at that, that point where we had to make some recommendations to be able to continue providing the service, the response times that I think our residents expect. And so, I know we'll have a lot of conversation, I'm sure, about, about the personnel request, but I wanted to let you know that along with growth and the opportunities associated with that, we also have some challenges.
Perfect. Mayor, Council, Ben Williamson, Assistant City Manager. We're gonna talk to you about the 2022 Critical Business Outcomes, and for some of our council members, first time seeing this element of the presentation. There it is, okay. So, this is your strategy map, and you're gonna get this as part of the strategic plan. It's at the very beginning every time. This is the one place where you can stop and show how we create value as an organization. Everything that has anything to do with our strategic priorities and who we are as an organization is, is here, and it's visually represented in a one-page handout. At the very top, you're gonna have the mission of the city. At the very bottom, you're gonna have our core values, our vision right above that.
You shared, I'm gonna stop here.
Okay. Okay.
That works. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, back to the strategy map. This is aligned to the balanced scorecard methodology as well, so everything connects together, the way we do performance, the way we design our strategic plan, and most importantly, the critical business outcome. Every year, we get together with the council, identify your strategic priorities. What do you want to see as an outcome in the next one to three years? The way we do that is we ask for the critical business outcomes. So, one to three years means some critical business outcomes will stay the same for multiple years, if not longer. Some may have some fine tuning and adjustment, some may be considered accomplished, and some may be added as new. But when you're ever looking at, "How do we handle our business? What are the different perspectives? What are we trying to do?" This gives you everything that is the strategic management for the City of Farmers Branch in one place. The budget narratives you'll see in the budget document, you also saw those when Charles and Charleston said out earlier. You're gonna see one of these for every department. I'm using sustainability and public health as my example. And so, you're gonna see a couple of things. Who we are. Some of these departments are very complex, and some cities have similar departments, but they're completely different. An example would be community services. In some cities, that's the Parks Department, and ours, it's more of the development side of that equation. So, it tells you, "Who is this division? What do they do?" The other part is key processes. What are they trying to accomplish? Strategic initiatives that they're, they're going to accomplish this year, and then new this year. So, we're always, continuous improvement's a big part of what we do. And so, this year, every department's key performance metrics were moved into their budget narratives. This isn't all of their metrics. Some departments have 70, 80, 90 measures of things they're tracking, but these are the key measures that show you how they're performing on that create value. How are they doing in delivering that service, delivering at what level? Timeline review, we had a little bit brief earlier. Starts in January, early part of the year, where we talk about, "What does council want to achieve?" Give that a couple of months for the departments to think about that. Okay, how do I turn that outcome? What does it take to achieve that outcome? So, in 2021, we get the directors, or April, no, 2021, April 2021, we got together with the directors and started walking through those critical business outcomes, and talked to everybody, said, "How do we accomplish this? What do those initiatives look like?" And so, they built the initiatives, so that ties back to the budget process, because these initiatives are driving the budget. We're asking for the money to accomplish the outcomes, and here's how we can do that. This year, you do have nine critical business outcomes. Now, critical business outcomes, you're gonna see strategic initiatives linked to every single one of these. It's not a one-to-one correlation. On average, the strategic plan has between 140 and 180 strategic initiatives for the entire year. When you say, "Well, what is a strategic initiative?" We tend to use the definition of a project. It hasn't been done before. It's got a definite beginning and end, and it's got a major impact on the organization, or it's of such critical importance that even though it recurs every year, it's still important to have it on the strategic plan, because its success is critical to the city. So, I'm not gonna read these out, because we're gonna go through these one by one in just a moment, but this is the critical business outcome list for the upcoming budget. So, ensure strategic planning aligned to current status of city and mission and vision. This has been on there several times. It's changed the wording a little bit here and there, but what this is trying to show you is that there's a lot of plans in this city. There's a sustainability plan. There's a trail plan. There's a parks plan. There's a lot of plans, and it's showing example plans that are coming up to make sure they're in alignment to what's going on with the city's overall goals. And see, some of these other initiatives that have started to be identified, this is what's coming up in the next year. There's gonna be updates to these plans. We're gonna make sure alignment to the overall city. So, instead of each plan living on its own, what are the similarities in bringing those into kind of a synergy together? Improve access to responsible and diverse housing. Again, this one has morphed a couple times. At one time, it was affordable. At one time, it was more senior-centric. So, this talks about some of the initiatives that were done, and one that y'all had recently, which was talking about the multifamily development policy. A special screenshot from the joint meeting. Accessory dwelling units is gonna be a big part of that discussion, a senior living project. And then, how do we use existing programs to help with this discussion, move it forward? So, the demo rebuild program and neighborhood renaissance program. How do we make sure the tools we currently have meet the evolving and new needs the council has identified for us as a staff? Drainage and retention. This one has morphed quite a bit, and it's had a lot of success, but it's a continuous journey. So, you have Cook's Creek, Farmers Branch Creek, Rahai Creek, still continuing. And one example of something morphing to help with this would be the Neighborhood Partnership Program. Wasn't initially intended to be a source of funding to help walls along creeks, but we found a way to make that work and connect it together to an existing program that was already in development. The stormwater ordinance and the detention pond. So, this is technically not our initiative, but it impacts Farmers Branch. So, Addison's going to be delivering on this, because I was talking to Public Works, and they said, "Well, that's technically an Addison project." But because we're on the approval side of things, and it impacts us, it's been added to Public Works' strategic plan, because we want that to be successful. And so, just because it's in another city is taking the lead on it, we still need that to be successful. As Charles introduced earlier, plan for building and maintaining high-quality public assets. There's certain initiatives every year that you're gonna see on your strategic plan. Two of those are your fleet and facilities. There's very long-term plans that basically go forever, essentially, in a great cycle of replacement for vehicles, for building maintenance. But also talked about is, "What's in this budget?" The Justice Center, Branch Connection Support Center, and the Recreation Center second floor, the new Signature Park, a generator, and then a street bond program. The generator's more specific in that. That's at the branch connection, but we're also exploring other options for grants. Whenever we see these initiatives, it's not just, "Can we put it in the budget?", but "Can we achieve that?" Because you go back to the strategy map, one of the goals is to achieve these objectives with using as many financial tools as possible, not just city dollars. And so, emergency management and the fire departments working on grants that make it possible to help offset some of those costs. We love getting grants, because it can take a three-to-one multiplier for our funds. Generally, federal funds have a 75% match. Arts is a continuous evolution here, and you're starting to see more and more art take shape in Farmers Branch. And some of that's just giving consideration to art. The most formal thing you'll see in the next year is the West Side Art Trail. $100,000 will start moving from that project to art every year, but leave the next five years for a total of $500,000, where we have a defined pathway for art on the west side. But how does that connect to the rest of the city? So, it's bigger than just art. It's the trails, the connectivity, and then you see just more art. How is that a strategic initiative? It's saying that there's gonna be opportunities throughout the year to seize on and be part of, to increase the art that's in the organization, and consider art, especially when you look at the buildings that we're working on here. Are there ways to incorporate art into these other initiatives? And it's saying, yes, we want to find a way to incorporate more art. We wanna find a formal funding mechanism as well, and it's a long-term goal. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time. So, it says three to five years. That's truthfully how long, it's gonna be a long-term vision. Strategically identify and acquire property to further the goals of the city. What's great about this one as a critical business outcome is it gives enough opportunity to interpret as we go. Sometimes the goals will move a little bit as we're going, because you don't wanna be beholden to a strategic plan that holds your hands tied to where you can't make adjustments and course corrections. And so, again, we're using the existing programs that we have to help us further the goals of the city, and then you have the stationary revitalization and master developer contracts. So, a lot of this ties to economic development. Talked about funding earlier, as the mayor proposed, we wanna add funding to economic development. That helps these programs grow and go further. Sustainability initiatives. This one's grown a lot, and there's a lot in this budget that revolves around sustainability. One, they had a plan that was started when Katie was here, and she sensed left, but with Alex here, it's bringing that plan back out, working with the new sustainability committee, and making sure we've got the right plan. It's got the right objectives and deliverables that are in there. So, that's gonna create that sustainability philosophy. Electric vehicle plan, a purchasing policy, and putting all these together. And the purchasing policy's a big part of this, because think about it as, you know, current purchasing policy is, we're gonna bring the bid that came through lowest cost. This will allow for additional considerations. Here's low-cost, here's low-cost green option. So, it allows different considerations for you all as the policy group to provide different, it gives you a different lens to look at the situation through and get feedback on. Charging stations and infrastructure, the one at the library. I go to the library almost every day to check on different elements of that project. It's still ongoing. There's almost always a vehicle parked there, so we're seeing that use of that charging station. The power switch program's one we've had for four years now. It's been incredibly successful. We've helped our residents save almost $700,000, but a big more from this program is it's now 100% green. So, this program, previously with the city manager's office, is moving to sustainability, where they'll try and take it to that next level. Can we improve it even further with the sustainability lens? And then, an example for another initiative is permeable driveways. Currently, if you're doing a driveway, it has to be concrete, and there's very rigid standards to what that is. So, it's concrete, more concrete. This is saying, can we create something in our building code with sustainability as the lead to create a pathway for permeable driveways? And that helps with some of the other initiatives. We talked about water runoff. We want the water to be absorbed into the ground, so that helps us with other initiatives. They cascade into each other. And the I-35 corridor study. A lot of this is gonna fall to planning and economic development as well, so you're gonna see several, target area two, target area three, target area four. There's very long explanations of what those are in there, but it's showing that the whole, there's several initiatives in the planning realm that show what we're going to do with the results of the quarter study and how we're going to implement that, including the code expansion update. And then, tip four, which you saw, also had some art implications as well. So, just because an initiative is identified in one area, doesn't mean it cascades over into other areas. We love initiatives where they're in multiple buckets. It's even better to show it's meeting multiple needs for the city that have been identified. So, as it is, this is the baseline of the strategic plan. It's achieving the critical business outcomes that council has identified, but again, it's gonna be accompanied by well over 100 additional initiatives that keep moving forward. Oh, forgot number nine. So, I was like, "There are nine." Targeted community engagement. This is a big one, where you're seeing a lot of, certain programs that have existed for a long time, but for example, fire and police, instead of having, they always do, they're gonna add a Spanish option. They're gonna incorporate Spanish into that program. The Nidos program, and then Farmers Branch tonight out as well, so that's kind of a morphing target that moves with feedback from council every year. The FBTX Connect app, so that's gonna be that 311. It's a way of engaging with our residents. The National Community Survey, so the targeted mailings went out this week, so the survey is starting, and so, they're targeting predetermined where they're gonna do to do a valid survey that's statistically valid, and so, that, those mailers went out for select addresses. Next month, it opens to the whole city. We're seeing what the data does when we randomly sample versus those who choose to participate. Does it swing the data one way or another, and what is it telling us? National Community Survey, we're using a company called Pollco. They're national, they have lots of cities across the country, so they have a huge database, but one of the things they have that's fantastic, when I look at council and town halls, is it has live polling ability. So, it's a registration-based platform. That way, we can verify that whoever's participating is a Farmers Branch resident, but y'all have all had meetings where, "Hey, how do you feel about this?", and you see the results going live on a screen. This will allow you to have those meetings relatively uninterrupted. It's quick, so we can preload the questions. We can move them forward. And you can also allow folks to provide live interactions, but it can also be kept private. So, somebody wants to give a different opinion on a subject, they don't have to say, "Hey, I feel this way about this or that." You can just say, "Hey, I have a question about this perspective or that perspective." So, when we have something to discuss, it can also allow folks that aren't necessarily in the meeting, it can be opened up as well. So, we create a QR code. You come into the meeting, you can participate, or we can broadcast and say, "Whoever wants to be there", but we can also restrict it to Farmers Branch residents as registered participants in the platform. So, that's a neat, new tool that we're still working with developing, but we have it in our toolbox. It's just making sure we understand how to use it effectively. And that is the Critical Business Outcomes for 2022. Mayor, pretend council?
Is our major still on?
Anyone, anyone have any questions as it relates to strategic initiatives or outcomes? All right, and we will move on to next presentation, which I believe is the overall presentation in property tax rate and Q3 update from Ms. Evans Jones.
I'm so glad to see you, couch. I was like, oh, please don't set this up.
Click her if you want it.
Okay, thank you. Do your best. Thank you. Put that right there and go with what I remember. Might have to go back over there to check some things. Good afternoon. Sherrell Evans-Jones, Director of Finance. And I'm here today to go over the contents and just kind of give you an overview of everything that is in the budget. One thing that I wondered as I was thinking about this is each of our council members may be new, some of our council members may be new to this process. And even if you're not new to the process, you get this big budget book or a budget or the electronic version of that. And if anyone has a desire to go through that book quickly just to kind of orient you, I'm happy to do that, or I can jump right into the slides, whatever your pleasure is. Okay, cool. So you have seen this slide before in terms of key dates that we talked about in a previous council meeting. We have gone through that study session. We, on the 26th or before, actually, a little bit before the 26th, we received our certified values. The $6.9 billion was the amount that was certified. And I have some more information on some upcoming slides to kind of dive a little deeper into that. We provided the budget to council electronically and in subsequent paper copies, and we made that budget available online on the 30th. We move forward. We have, we have received the tax rate certification from Dallas County, and I have some more information to kind of, and Charles alluded to some of those things in his opening comments. We're here at the retreat and we got a lot of changes and things like that to go before we get to our public hearing, which is, which is slated to be on the same date as we adopt the budget and all of its accoutrements, I would refer to. And then thereafter, on the 24th is when, is our deadline to get all of that information over to the county. Obviously, if we approve on the 21st, we'll probably be moving to get that information to them within, within the next business day. So what's the point? I, I tend to step back and think of like, what are the main things that are moving or happening with the budget? $137 million budget. I'm going to show you how that breaks down among the different funds. A, what included in this budget and subject to discussion of the council is a, it is a decrease in the overall budget. It includes a 1.9 cent decrease in the tax rate. So the budget's getting smaller, the tax rate's getting smaller in this proposed budget, subject to discussion here. This budget also includes just shy of $6 million of American Rescue Plan Act spending. That money is to be paid in two tranches, the first of which happens in this fiscal year. So we have that captured as well. And then no water sewer increases on rates in terms of our, the water rates or the amounts that we would charge for sewer or stormwater. So those all remain constant. I like pictures. And this is a picture of what $137 million looks like, and you can kind of see the concentrations among funds if you prefer it in that method or in that way. Obviously, general fund being the largest at 51%. So we'll spend a little bit more time going through a lot of, lot more of the components of that one, but we'll move throughout all of these funds and touch base with them to make sure that you have a general understanding of what things are flowing through there. I also like charts because, you know, I'm an accountant. And this, this chart reminds me, or at least the approach of how I look at the budget, especially from year to year, takes me back to my Big Four accounting days where one of the first things we would always do to understand what's going on with any client is we would lay out last year, we would lay out this year, we would see what's moving around. That's why I like these sorts of things. And this is one that we'll come back to multiple times throughout the presentation. You can see how that $137 million breaks down. And I'm just talking about some of the key changes that are driving big movements and numbers in that difference column. The Capital Projects Fund is one where you see a lot of movement there, $9.2 million decrease. One thing to keep in mind, and we can dig more into it as we talk about the CIP, but remember, or you may recall from our previous year's budget, CIP actually included a number of larger expenditure items. For instance, Stormwater CIP had an amount, we were creating this Stormwater CIP fund during last year's budget. And in moving data and moving funds from the enterprise fund, I got some slides to show it, in moving, we moved fund balance. So basically, you have a higher amount of spending during the prior year than what would be normally sustained. And so you kind of see some contraction there as expected. The Special Revenue Fund is one where you see a large increase, 4.5 million dollar increase, and that's where that ARPA funding resides. So our approach to budgeting for that is there will be a number of different types of projects that will be discussed throughout this retreat and then subsequent to this retreat. And the approach for right now is to capture that funding, the full $5.9 million within that fund. Some of those things are going to be capital in nature. And so in the end, once all of those projects are approved through council, we will put them in their most appropriate spot. Right now, there's just in a special revenue fund just to hold it. And then the other item that I was pointing out here is that Stormwater Utility Fund. So that's, that's an example of what is happening where we had a larger expenditure in last year because we were intentionally moving fund balance out of Stormwater Utility, which is an enterprise fund, into a CIP fund. We'll talk about all of these changes as we move forward. Okay, general fund. 51% of the ballgame. So this is where we're going to hang out for a little bit and make sure that, you know, we cover all of the topics. Revenues, and you can kind of see the breakdown of those revenues, property tax being the large one, sales and use tax, for a total revenue of $70 million compared to, or 70.03 compared to expenditures broken down amongst the different classes that we typically present those, $70.4 million. My mind walking in off the street, not fully understanding how everything works and operates, my accountant mind will go, okay, well, you got revenues more than you have expenses. What, what is that about? Bear in mind that fund, there is a significant amount of fund balance. So from year to year, we are able to, I mean, you can't be out of whack by millions of dollars, but there is a significant amount of fund balance that will enable this, this type of transaction. Okay, so let's talk property taxes. I'm backing up, so that's the $35 million. I'm about to get into each one of those major revenue items and explain those. So the first of which is property taxes. $35 million. As I said before on a previous slide, it is based on a $6.9 billion certified valuation. I give you some scope in terms of what that certified valuation was, well, what the estimated certified valuation was during the previous year. The previous year was, was an anomaly. It was a timeframe where typically our, our Dallas, Dallas DCA has a larger amount of the property tax rolls certified. This year in particular, because of implementation of some of those nuances with SV2, last year caused them to have a larger portion of our balance of our property tax rolls not certified, and it caused them to use kind of a new term for us last year, which was estimated certified. And then they came back and certified more. So that's just to give you an idea of changes. Of our total $6.9 billion that was certified, 73% is commercial. You can kind of see the breakdown between how much is commercial and how much is residential. And when they certify to us, there is also an amount always that is still in dispute. They're still working through the cases. So that is that .332 billion, a little, about a third of a billion. Okay? So what we do with that information is we intentionally, you know, we, we go through and look at historical information to give us comfort as to what portion we believe of that amount under protest might be realized in terms of the valuation. We have assessed that amount to be about 90%. And so the budget that we built is based on a $7.2 billion valuation. So if you hear 6.9 or 7.2, I don't understand what, why those are different. 6.9 is what's certified. There's some amount in dispute. We calculate our budget based on 7.2. Yes?
Can I ask a question now or should we wait till the end?
I have some stop points with each one of the funds where questions can fit in. Okay. And in terms of, I'm just giving you a little bit of a breakdown there in terms of how much of that property tax revenue is broken down between how much we use to pay debt, just about 11%, 10.8% versus how much is available for maintenance and ongoing operations. The last thing I wanted to point out on this, on this slide, and I have another slide to kind of explain it a little bit better, is our average home value increased by about So that's a little bit more than 2%. And I use those average prices to then run some calculations in terms of figuring out how much that would mean in terms of price changes to our property owners with the homestead exemption and then to our property owners that have a senior, over 65 exemption. So that's there. And I'm going to show you what it looks like and how we arrive at those amounts. The FAR column is just comparing the two amounts, last year 60, $263,000 compared to $269. What you see in the top part, all, let me see if I can point, yes. So all across here, I'm using our existing tax rate. So I'm trying to capture in this first block what life is like now. Okay? These other columns here are just me running that same, uh-oh, come back. These other columns are me running that same calculation just using, you know, different click points of the valuation, just, you know, just to provide a comparison. You may fit into this category, you may fit into a different category, just running it multiple ways. Okay. I mentioned before that moving from 263 to 269 is the roughly about 2% increase. So I've just applied that 2% increase across the board down here. Okay? And I have applied that 57 cent tax rate. All I'm doing is calculating the tax based on this information, calculating the tax based on this information, and subtracting the two. So you can kind of get an idea of how, in most instances, there is a decrease in, in the amount of calculated tax that might exist in a particular situation. That was a whole lot of math. Okay. Let's talk all of these different tax rates and what one means versus the other, et cetera. Okay. So when the county came back and provided a certified, the certified tax calculation, one key number to keep, one key number to keep in mind is this first one here. 55.95 cent. So that is the no new revenue tax rate. That's the new term they're using. It used to be called the effective tax rate. So the tax rate that, given your valuation change and pulling out any kind of new construction, et cetera, the tax rate that would give you the same amount of revenue as what you had last year. This is the tax rate that triggers whether, if you exceed that tax rate, that's the tax rate that triggers whether or not you have to have any additional hearings, et cetera. So you saw me in an earlier slide showing how we would do public hearings on the same date on the 21st, et cetera. So that's that rate that triggers that. Let's drop down to the blue line. So this is the line that, the tax rate that we're using to calculate the whole budget at this point. This is a tax rate that's still up for discussion and just a point that allows you all to begin to talk further. It's below the tax rate that we have adopted and that we're living under now. These two with the red outlines around them are of particular interest to me, and I want to make sure that I convey that to you so, because they may be of particular interest to you. This 56 cents is the tax rate that if we exceeded it, it will cause us to have to, if we exceeded it and we didn't have any increment, it will cause us to have to have a special election or something like that in order to move forward with that particular tax rate. I have both of those highlighted in a red because I just want you to see how much of that increment that's moving into place that's helping us. So the bottom line, the 67.9 cents is that tax rate, the maximum tax rate that we could potentially adopt without having to have voter approval. It would utilize the full 11 cent differential between 56.3, you know, to get there. And that is not a tax rate that we have used in the budget or that we would at all necessarily, that's not a tax rate that we have used in the calculation of, of the budget. One thing to note is that an upcoming meeting, what we typically do is you should expect on September 7th, there will be, at that council meeting, there will be some items on the agenda for adopting a maximum tax rate. In past practices, what we have done is adopt whatever this maximum is, although that is rarely the number that we go forward with in terms of approving the budget. So when you get your council packet for that meeting, don't be scared or worried. It doesn't mean that we are moving forward with a budget of, a tax rate of 67 cents. It just means we want to adopt and publicize what the maximum is to allow us as we continue throughout these discussions to make sure that we have all available options on the table. And this is just some information from year to year. It may be of interest in terms of how some of our sister cities, competitor cities, nearby cities may be handling their rates. Now, I will draw you to the note that's at the bottom, which you can't see, that talks about August 3rd being the date that I pull that information. It is based on what is, what was published in their budgets. All of these cities are going through a similar process and, you know, they're going to have movements and changes, et cetera, before they ultimately adopt their budgets. I'm going to stop there. I'm going to talk about property tax revenue before I move on to sales tax. Are there any questions there?
So in years past, the commercial part of, or percentage of the property tax revenue was around 78%. I saw it drop to about 76%. Now, it's estimating to be 73%. So you're telling me the citizens are paying more?
We have more citizens.
Actually, you, you have more citizens.
The whole west side, we have more citizens.
They have more citizens.
Yeah.
More residential property.
Where, where the citizens, I guess, are very, a larger portion.
Well, they're more of them.
They're more of them.
And one other thing to your point, if I am telling you that we had a 12% increase in valuation... If I am telling you that we had a twelve percent increase in valuation, okay? And I am also telling you that only two percent of that is showing up in terms of the change, the change in residential. You can kind of get somewhat of a scope in terms of, you know, a lot of, good amount of that increase is showing up in commercial changes. Okay? Do you have any other questions? Okay. Sales tax. Sales tax is the trickiest number to pick. I mean, you know, it, it really, it really is. It is so subjective to consumer spending and, and a lot of other factors that are going on. But one thing that I, I am particularly encouraged by is the fact that we were braced for when the pandemic happened. When the pandemic really started happening to us in March of twenty twenty, we were already halfway through the year and we were already trending well ahead of the budget at that point. So one good thing that we have going for us is that we didn't experience any, you can just kind of look at these, look at these, you know, recent past year trends. We didn't experience any major drops or dips or, you know, major bumps or what have you. And I, and I think that is particularly encouraging and it's something that speaks to some of the great things that we're doing around our city from an economic development perspective and bringing businesses in, et cetera. And so we have calculated this budget and we presume, presume a four percent increase in sales and use tax revenue. Our most recent monthly trends don't give us any indicator that that number is too aggressive or too lenient or what have you. We feel like we have struck a sweet spot in terms of the number that we are projecting for revenue in, at seventeen point eight million. Then within general fund revenue, there are a host of other categories of revenue. And my intent in the next couple of slides is just to hit some of the big items and help you to understand what those key drivers are, what we know about the number, et cetera. And I'm going to move that down here. They're taking a little tour around the screen. So refuse services, that is a, a, a big one for us in terms of the revenue that comes from our landfill. Since the expansion of the landfill and the twenty seventeen, eighteen year, you can just see it in the numbers. There's been a steady upward tick in the revenue that has been coming in as a result of that. We worked really closely with the Director of Sustainability to come up with this revenue amount. And that's kind of based on his assessment of tonnage and, and following that performance, et cetera. And so we expect a five point three, six million dollar amount of revenue. So about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase from our adopted budget this year. And this is kind of the balance of other, you know, million dollar revenue items that may be of particular interest. So franchise fees is one where we actually, we, we actually anticipate that revenue to decline. What we're seeing in this year is that there is some legislation that allows for franchisors to, if you have electric, electricity franchise and a telephone franchise and a cable franchise, they used to pay all three. Now, if you have multiple lines of service, it's possible, and the legislation changed to allow them to pay one franchise fee. So that's impacting the amount of revenue that we're seeing coming in during current year. And so as a result, we've decreased that revenue assessment for the upcoming year. Licensing and permits is where, another one of these areas where we always anticipated that we would have a boom, a ramp up, and then kind of a decline. So we are still, I mean, two million dollars, two, two million, fifty-two thousand dollars is nothing to be upset about, but it is an area where we always anticipated that revenue to decline. And it is doing that in, in terms of as the West Side becomes more and more completely built out. So that is one of those areas. And then revenues from fines, forfeits and assessments, we anticipate that revenue to maintain its, its twenty, twenty, twenty-one adopted budget amount at one point eight million dollars. Okay. I'm a box checker. So we've covered a lot of, you know, revenue. And the revenues that I'm not hitting, I mean, you can kind of see they're in the, in the ballgame. They're relatively smaller amounts.
Sherrell, just to, to Councilman Lynn's point, I just want to mention, I looked it up. We had, in terms of residential parcels, for this year, we had nine hundred and ten residential parcels added, which is an eleven percent increase. That's a huge increase for us on the residential side. So that's, that translates to why those numbers have altered that way.
Thank you. It's like fact checks on the side.
Nine hundred and ten.
Okay, so with that, we've covered a lot of revenue ground. Let's move forward and talk a little bit about expenditures. The budget in terms of seventy million, four hundred, hundred thousand is, let's see where you're going to go this time. You're going over here. Is increasing by one point six million or two percent, two point three percent. And so the next slide is, is intended to give you a high level overview, because there's a lot of information on it, is intended to give you a high level overview of what the key things are that are happening, that are driving that change and that are included in the seventy million dollars. But recognize that the balance of our time together, you're going to be having lots of other people that are more of the experts in these specific areas to come in and talk with you more about what those changes mean and all of that. So I wouldn't be the best person to ask all the details about who and why the police officers, which ones are needed and things like that, is, is an example. But they're coming. So, as, okay, where, where do I put them, Kevin? Let's go, let's go. And then they'll come back to the other side. I'm going to work my way across. Okay. So this is the breakdown of it. Lot of information. This is the, this is the slide I was like, I don't have that much real estate. Let's see how to fit everything on here. General government. That's, it encompasses a lot of different things. Of that seventy point four million, this is fifteen point two million or about twenty-one, twenty-two percent. The major things that are changing within that area include a one point three million dollar addition of expenditures related to several things. The step adjustments for public safety, personnel, merit increases, which weren't included in last year's budget, and an adjustment that is required or suggested as a result of the major compensation study that was done during this year. So we have the results from that and we have calculated those things into this upcoming year's budget. Then we also have included within general government about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand related to additional personnel. Charles, Charles touched on some personnel and it's kind of spread throughout this, this whole slide in different areas. But in areas of HR, finance and IT, those are included there. And there's some upcoming discussion in terms of, you know, the case for each of those. And then lastly, that's included in general government, you know, a larger item, is three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars related to two major studies. One is a citywide comprehensive plan and the other is a stationary code expansion. So those are, reside within the planning area and those are kind of some of the larger changes that happen within, within general government. Brian will be here to talk about the compensation study results and, and then I mentioned the other upcoming items. Public works, twelve million of the seventy point four million. But double asterisk on, on that one, a major thing to remember is that a significant portion of public works funding is encompassed in CIP and, and a public utility over on the enterprise side of things. So this is just what is sitting within general government, I mean, excuse me, within the general fund. And the major thing that's happening within the public works area, which also includes sustainability, is a million dollars of funding for landfill closure, post closure cost. And there are, in the, in the course of what we do on a year-to-year basis, we have a process but whereby we retire certain vehicles that we've had for a while and purchase certain vehicles. So this includes the replacement of a loader truck and the hire of an animal services officer. Mark Bentley will be here on day two to talk quite a bit about CIP and flood map and things like that that are included in, some included in this fund, but some included in other funding to just kind of give you an overall idea of what's happening from a public works perspective. Public safety. That's how you know the slide is long. Am I doing something wrong?
No, I'm not sure what's happening.
Okay. I'll keep going, I'll keep going until it just stops on me. Okay, public safety. Twenty, twenty-nine point three million, forty-one percent. The major changes there are within fire, the hire of an additional fire present, fire prevention inspector. And then police includes an amount to hire four new police officers. And there also includes an amount related to INTEC, our nine-one-one call dispatch organization. There was a change in the cost allocation that caused a little bit of, well, a, a three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar shift in terms of expenditures that are to be included in our budget this upcoming year. So Chief Hale, Chief Vargas will be here to talk about proposed new hires and key metrics, et cetera, to share those details. You don't need to see that no more. Now we're moving over here. And then lastly, parks at about twenty percent of general fund. The, it wasn't a whole lot of major movement, you know, if you lay year over year in terms of parks. One of the larger things was just CIP funding. So, so you will see sometimes in just understanding how this works is you will see within different portions of our budget that there are transfers out of general fund into CIP or into other funds in order to take care of some of these things. So a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar ongoing CIP funding related to field lighting, playground equipment. And it's a, this is one of those examples that Charles mentioned in terms of pay-go funding. Mike Mashburn, the Director of Parks and Rec, will be here to talk about, a lot of his conversations may be more centered around some of the upcoming proposals for ARPA funding to give more details on those. Yes. You're perfect, you're right on time.
Can you go back?
Sure.
So on the first column of your budget highlights, of the one point three million dollars for step and merit increases, if I'm reading the chart correctly, I don't know. I'm guessing step and public safety is about quarter, ninety-five thousand of that one point three.
I could pull that, I, I would rather not tell you an incorrect detail, but I can look on my details and tell you that.
I'm just trying to find out what is the amount for step.
Okay.
The non-public safety part of that.
Okay. I will let you know on the next break. Charles Flippin, he might have it. I know where it is to get at it, but I, I, it would, you would, you don't want to see it.
Yeah.
I'll get it.
Okay.
I can get it. Okay. Any other questions there before we move on to another fund? Because we, we've been camping out in general fund for a little bit. Okay. Let's see where y'all going right now. Okay. So, box checker, we got general fund down, pushing on the water and sewer. Okay? Let's talk about it. So, as I said before, no increases in the water sewer fee has been factored into this budget. This budget includes a seven, seven and a half million dollar transfer into CIP. So that's, you know, it'll show up in this number. It, it includes a seven and a half million dollar transfer into CIP to continue with some of those pay-as-you-go funding items. No debt, that's something that we're very proud of. There's a number of cities, you can pull them and look at them, can't do this type of, you know, it, honestly, to me, it takes discipline, you know, to be able to set this type of money aside and use it, you know, to take care of these critical infrastructure items. Now, you see charges for water service in the revenue, you see charges for sewer service, and then a few other line items in terms of other expenditures that come through for a total of twenty-five point five million dollars of revenue. You see administrative costs as well as the line share of the money is. So included in here is large contracts to pay TRA, to pay Dallas Water Utilities. That's where all of that water sewer operation, that's what is capturing. So this is one of those areas where you put twenty-five million in, twenty-eight million out. Right now with our fund balance, and I have some slides to show that in a, in a moment, even though we're two and a half million difference there, we don't really see a need to, at this point, increase because of the fund balance that we have. Even after this amount is factored in, we're still projecting a one point nine million dollar fund balance, which is right at our target of two million dollars. So even factoring this in, it felt like the right thing to do to not pass a increase in order to make those be in balance. Okay. Rachel is so good, she made this. You know, I don't have the skillset to do all of this moving and things like that. Okay, so water and sewer. One key thing to remember here is, you know, this is, this is like a three-legged stool to me in my mind. It's the money that we have coming in in terms of the revenue from businesses and residents, et cetera, in terms of their utility bills they pay. There is a consumption that is a significant factor in our assessments and our calculation. That is a, we study details in terms of past year's usage and what was rainfall at the time and a lot of different things, but we're making an assessment of what we believe that consumption to be. And then another major factor is the money that we pay for services. So one thing that happens from time to time, and this may be, you know, good information for you, is sometimes we have businesses or individuals that may have leaks. And that causes, you know, if, if that leak occurs on their side of the property, we still pay for, come back, we still pay for that consumption that ran through the pipe. That's still funding that we have to send to Dallas Water Utilities for the amount of funding that is consumed. And so one other thing to consider is that some cities may run a calculation like this, you know, looking at consumption to try to figure out what the revenue, what the rate increase needs to be. We don't have any, we don't factor in any padding for a certain amount that we are crediting, you know, for those types of items. So I, I just wanted to kind of share that.
Is that a significant amount?
No, but we have.
That customers would come and contest because of a leak?
No, and it doesn't happen often, but what happens sometimes is that they can be vocal. So I just want you all to have the background understanding that from So I just want you all to have the background understanding that from. The city's perspective, that's money that we gotta pay when, you know.
But and consumption also includes usage for fire and flushing lines.
That is not, that is not funding that. Yes, it it does, but that is not funding, that is not amounts that are running. In terms of a cost to a residence. Okay, yes, yes. That is part of our calculation of. We're gonna consume this much. We think they're gonna so consume this much, et cetera. So, yeah. So our budget is based on um two and a half billion um gallons to be consumed. Um, that's been rare, um been consistent over the past few years. But it is subject to a lot of things in terms of, you know, like. I guess a couple of years ago, I got a new washer and dryer, and I am amazed at how little water those new washers use, you know? So as more and more high efficiency products come into play, you'll start seeing less and less water consumption, hopefully. Because we all want to be a little bit more green. This is a slide that I mentioned where I was showing you the two point. I believe it was eight million dollar differential between the revenue and expense. So what I'm showing you here, this is a graph of. The uh cash balance. It's it's tight and it's small and it's a lot of little m- months and things like that to see. But the key to pay attention to is this is zero, like no cash. So from some years. Water sewer was borrowing money from general fund. Um, and then, you know, we've had an up and down rocky relationship with this. With this fund in terms of getting it built up. This red line represents the uh targeted fund balance. So throughout any given year, excuse me, throughout the year. That number is gonna fluctuate based on the timing of when we, you know, pay expenditures and things like that. But at the end of the day. What we have calculated for um the water sewer fund, even after these changes that um we have just discussed. Puts us right about at that two million dollar mark in terms of our fund balance. So just kind of showing you the. Um, ups and downs in terms of the cash and investment balance of those. Okay, that's water sewer. Any other questions there before we push into stormwater?
Sure, I just want to mention in terms of that earlier question about the breakdown. Uh, of the the uh the increases for employees. Eight hundred thousand of the one point three, eight hundred thousand is for public safety and five hundred thousand uh is merit for uh non sworn.
Thank you so much. It helps to have a city manager who used to be the finance director. He knows where all this stuff is. Okay, so you're about to see two stormwaters. Okay, one is the taking care of business stormwater. One is the building infrastructure stormwater. We refer to one as the enterprise. We refer to the other as the C I P. I like taking care of business because it just sounds pretty funky. Okay, so let's talk about what is going on from a year to year perspective. This proposed year, last year. So as I stated in some earlier comments, we don't have any changes proposed for. Um, the revenue in terms of stormwater. You see that continuing. Um, one change in terms of the revenue was.
I'm sorry, would that not go up though with more homes coming online? Like we added nine hundred parcels, we're probably gonna have another couple hundred more. So at seven dollars a month, would that not play into that?
It it would, and what it would do is, so we're not factoring in a rate increase for that. And so to your point, what it would do actually is it would put us in at less of a net. Loss perspective. It'll eat that number up and we were comfortable with that. Okay? Um, so in last year's um budget, this five hundred thousand was, I think, a council um recommended item. So. You know, during the course of the budget discussions, this was one of those items that we wanted to fund more. Um, uh, increase a transfer um during the upcoming, during the past year's budget, five hundred thousand. So that factored in there. Um, and then the major change here. Is this number four point three million includes moving money, and you'll see it show up on another slide. Includes moving money out of the taking care of business stormwater into the C I P. So that's where that transfer is captured. What we're trying to do here going forward is this movement is smaller because what we're trying to move is. Um, more of current year type activities instead of moving out the um built up fund balance. After these cha- um, the the changes, so those, I talked about those key things. Okay. Now let's move on to the C I P area. So. There's that, there's that transfer showing up. So it it came out of here as a. Spend and it came in here as a plus, okay? Um, and then basically you see expenditures coming down in terms of spending that money to do um creek projects or other items. Though that's really the main difference between the the two funds is in term, excuse me, that's really the main difference. Um, between last year and this year is last year had fund balance that we were intentionally spending down or intentionally moving to this C I P state. Um, the C I P fund, another reason for the creation of this non bond um stormwater C I P fund. Is it enables projects to have more of a longer lived life within our financial system. Things that sit within our, within operating or within our enterprise system, they come to life during a particular budget year. There's purchase orders, there's spending on them, and then they have a sunset. But these types of things are more ongoing, and so it made more sense to account for them. And to create a C I P fund to account for them. Are there questions about water sewer, stormwater? Yes, uh, stormwater is all his, his jam. He's. He's the one that kind of manages the spending of those things. Okay. Check, check, check. We're pushing down unless y'all. You good? You need a break? Okay. Hotel motel is the next stop. We got three checks. Hotel motel is. One moment. Hotel motel is the um, i- is the fund that I think suffered the most as a result of the pandemic. You saw it happen. People, you know, were in their homes, not traveling. And that is where we saw the largest impact on our finances. Um, so our adopted budget did take some of these um changes into consideration. You can kind of see compared to where we're. Um, going. One thing that um I was looking at as a. Do we, do we believe in this revenue? Do we believe we're going from one point five to two million, you know? The last few months have been very, very, very encouraging. We can see monthly um as the hotels are reporting. And we can compare those months to the same months last year, you know, which are gonna be practically nothing. But you see a big, um, a lot of movement in that area that is very encouraging. Um, and so we do feel comfortable with that. With that two million dollar assessed um revenue in that area. Um, and where you see the expenditures within this fund are uh split between two areas. Um, historical preservation, which is funding to um take care of different things related to the historical park. This um changed between one point three four and one point three one. That um difference is some additional spending, this thirty eight thousand uh expenditures related to some historical park repairs and things like that. Um, we have uh increased that revenue, but what we're um holding is. The funding related to the promotion of tourism. Um, right now we want to see that revenue kind of increase and then in. Uh, future years, we may be able to um begin to increase the expenditures related to that. Um, with this particular fund, we are projecting, you know, an increase in revenue. Um, a little bit of an increase, not that much in expenditures, and that uh net loss. When we calculate that all the way down and take a look at where that um shows up in terms of what that looks like in terms of the fund balance. This um sixty seven thousand dollars or sixty eight thousand dollars does put us within our target of the desired fund balance for this particular fund. Yes, sir?
So, uh, Councilwoman Maritana might weigh in on this also, but. Let's just say, since this is a forecast and hypothetically, uh, the delta variant. Starts taking hold of the country. I mean, we have the ability to uh re-figure these numbers, but they're not gonna si- uh. They wouldn't affect tax rate or the overall city budget.
They sit on this, they sit in a different fund. Yeah, this, this hotel motel does not affect the tax rate.
Or or our general operating. Uh, well, it does for the expenditure side of things.
Well, it it.
But we could scale that back.
That can be scaled back as we saw in um when um. Original COVID, because we got variants. COVID one point oh showed up. You saw how we were like. Contract. Um, so with this particular um a fund and within, within our um. Budget overall, whether it's this fund or not, we have the ability to quickly take a look at things and contract and kind of curtail some of those spending and that. You know, we're watching it, we're encouraged, um, but, you know, we know what's happening around us as well.
Gerald David, man, good question.
Yes.
Um, how many hotels and hotels are in the pool uh for contributing to the tax fund?
Less than fifteen. I'm closing my eyes because I'm looking at the, I'm look, I'm, I'm visualizing the spreadsheet, so it's less than fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm becoming a little expert at moving this. Okay, debt service. Because we got a service to debt, the debt requires a service. So this is a screenshot of one of those pages from your budget book. Is, you know, you can kind of take a look at it more in detail. But when we talk about um. The six point four seven two million in terms of our our planned debt service expenditure. You can kind of see that those numbers come from the. Okay, it comes from the um section here that talks about debt service requirements for our um. Um, particular pieces of debt and um the service requirements as well related to. Um, the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two landfill amounts. So a total of six point four seven two million is planned. Within those debt service pages, so within your workbook, um, it is pages seven point one through seven twenty. That include a lot of information. It kind of starts with like a narrative about, you know, how it works, et cetera. And then each one of those um uh issuances of debt is discussed a little bit. And then you go into a bunch of pages. The first set of pages are talking about our property tax supported debt. And when you start getting to the back of the schedule, you'll get into our self supported debt, which is related to the landfill, et cetera. Where there is revenue coming in and in particular to support that debt is not um supported by prop- property tax revenue. So, um, that's kind of the layout of our debt service. It um, that four point. Um, that four point six eight million of uh property tax supported debt service payments is. Um, three million related to principal and one point six four million related to interest. And you can kind of see that on those debt service pages. Um, and I'm happy to point that out to you on a break if you have questions about that. Economic development.
Do you want to take a quick, like, uh, quick break?
Sure.
Um, let's say, I don't know, five, ten minutes? We'll come back at two thirty five.
There's like. Four slides left. We got this. We got this. So economic development is where we left off. Um, there are some things happening within this particular fund. One of those things, so the this fund gets revenue in from a couple of different sources in this particular year. One of those is from a transfer from general fund. Um, that's the nine hundred and fifty thousand. And then you see a larger line item here, two point eight million. That is for this anticipated sales of two properties. One is a uh, yeah, there's the, there's line item listed in the budget, so I guess I can. Um, the Carrick Street property that's over um John near in our um. Station area.
The the G L C property, the school district property.
So that, when that fund, um, when that sale fully takes place, it will come into this fund as revenue. Um, and then the other is related to the fire station number two. So those two items are um slated to come within, into this fund, providing a total of three point. Seven five million. Generally speaking, um, the sale of property, then this is just uh something good for. Just informational purposes. What we do from a financial perspective is, you know, we take a look at the properties. A- and what which fund purchased those properties. Um, generally speaking, to figure out where that revenue rightfully goes back into. Um, every once in a while, there may be a situation where um we are funding economic development or something like that. In terms of uh property sales and it moving into the economic development fund. But generally what we're doing is. Um, because there are properties, whenever you are in different sessions and you're having those conversations about we're gonna purchase this. Or we're gonna sell this and get money in. If E D fund bought it, when E D fund sells it, it comes into the fund, okay?
And so the nine fifty is what we're allocating for E D funds to be able to do those types of things.
The nine fifty, yes. The nine fifty is what we're allocating, is coming out of general fund. As money into um, into this particular fund to take care of some of these expenditures down.
Okay? Oh, gotcha.
Uh huh. And then, so the expenditures we have set aside is one point eight million for development agreements. That is your um, that that is funding for existing development agreements as well as it provides some room for. Um, E D to be able to make some new agreements as those opportunities arise. Um, it provides funding for land purchases, so that is, you know, the things that y'all talk about is the. The revenue would show up here if it was sold and we got money in, if we're needing to purchase something, that would be the money out to make that purchase. Um, neighborhood partnerships, so there's a small amount of funding there, um, other redevelopment operations. And um, a funding for demo rebuild. One thing to note here is I'll come to your um question in just one second. One thing to note here is we have uh three point seven five in, we have. Three point one five out, so we do have a little bit of net income. So to the extent that um. That there is some sort of a, you know, a good number of these things are under contract. That's how we come up with the amounts that we're anticipating. But to the extent that there's some sort of a deviation from our two point eight million dollar plan on those sales, we do have some um.
Is that about where y'all usually try to keep your fund balance with the economic development just because of the fluctuations in? In those contracts?
Not necessarily. So this line item here is a non standard, this is not here every year. Um, um, it's just, we know we got two larger items that would be coming in.
We don't always have properties sell. We don't think that it's going to happen in a particular year. Do you feel good about that?
Right, and and normally, normally the way it happens is it's a wash in and a wash out, right? And so those have a netting effect on the net income, you know, and so they don't typically, we don't typically call them out. But this is two point eight million dollars, so we wanted to explain that as a part of the fund.
So let's say in the next couple of months, those two sales become finalized. Um, and let's say we do have that six hundred net income. Will we be putting that six hundred? Will that stay in the eco dev funding for us to be able to? will that stay in the ECO Dev funding for us to be able to allocate to, you know, any of those others as deltas to be able to do a little more demo, a little more-
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That's a, no, that's why I was pointing that out to you as well. Yeah. So if two point eight came in as planned, you, and all these other expenditures, that does represent some ability to be able to move some of that funding. I would, if, if it were me and I was advising, I would let these transactions happen first before, you know, I'm cautious.
Oh, for sure, sure. Oh, for sure. Yeah, once, yeah, I'm sorry, that's why I said, let's say in two months it happens, and we can try to re-allocate that, okay?
Okay. Check, check, check. All right, so we're down to our last two funds, one of which is going to be more significantly discussed in, um, tomorrow. So let's hit the one last thing, which is our special revenues fund. Okay, let's see where y'all going this time. There you go. Okay, special revenue funds has a lot of things in it. You can tell by the number of line items. The nature of, the nature of special revenue funds is that it has a bunch of different sub-funds within it. And the nature of what happens within that fund is somebody gives us some money to do something specific that's not general fundy or any of these other funds related. So, um, and I, an area where you come across special revenues fund a lot, where you don't, you're not maybe thinking about it that way, is when people come in and give a donation to, um, the historical park for a bench, and you all at the council meetings during the ceremonial, you accept those funds. When, when, sometimes those things are planned and they are part of this expenditure here. Sometimes those things are not planned because you don't know that, you know, somebody is going to just up and gift you with something like that. So what, what typically happens is, um, to make an expenditure out of there, you may see them, you may see the language that's explaining that they're amending the budget. Because to make an expenditure out of there, they have to get your approval to be able to amend from the seventy-five thousand dollars that was planned. So just to e- explain a little bit of how that works. Um, the major things that are moving here, so grants fund, ding, ding, ding. That five point seven, five point eight million dollars is where the ARPA funds are located within that grant fund. Here, you can see the difference showing up. Um, and then photographic light, so I, my mind looks to see what's changing, what's moving, what's different. Um, and so photographic light, that's the red light camera, um, budget. You see four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars last year compared to two hundred and fifty-three this year. So when I went back and looked at that, I was like, well, I thought we were spending that all the way out. You know, that was my understanding of the budget when we adopted the four thirty-one. I went back and looked at actual spending, uh, for that particular fund, and it's projected to be less than the budget. You know, so we, we projected to spend four thirty-one, they're not going to spend all of it. So basically, this is them coming back in to spend, to try to take that number all the way down.
To take, to reduce the funds that were in that account.
Correct, correct. Um, and then resident, residential revitalization, so this is that, um, bond fund that we, what year? Look, it's been so many bond issuances, huh, Charles? So I think that was, um-
Three years.
And twen- two years ago that we issued the second piece of, um, the residential revitalization, um, bond fund. So we, um, anticipate spending that fund, that one, remaining one point four, five million dollars all the way down during this year. If it doesn't, what we do, um, and this is just good information for you all, is when, so you have a budget document. We're going to talk about it, we're going to make changes, we're, you know, et cetera. One area you should expect to see changes when you get the final on the, in preparation for the meeting on the twenty-first, is we look at all of these funds one more time. And if we don't see the spending go where we think it's going to go, you may see something pop over here similar to how it happened with, um, the photographic light. What, what we're doing is we're looking to see if we spent it all, and if not, you may see some expenditures show up during the upcoming year, just to allow for them, them to continue to do that. Okay? Um, and the last thing that is of interest, I think, is the TERS district number three. So you see, um, an increase of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, um, and that is related to kind of two things. One is the increase in the number of homes. So this is the TERS that funds a portion of the money that, um, a portion of the PID assessments. So you have heard a lot about, um, the individuals that live on our west side within the Mercer, um, crossing PID area, they have an assessment that they have to pay, um, that takes care of water and all sorts of infrastructure, forty, fifty million dollars worth of infrastructure that was put in. Part of that, um, ease that the city puts in is a forty percent credit. So this number is moving up partially because of an increased, um, um, activity in terms of individuals living there, but mostly because the credit has moved from one percent, which it was in its early year, to forty percent. That was always a part of the plan, is that it moved to forty percent when TERS number one sun, sunset, because it had a certain amount of credit that we were paying. So now we, you know, I'm just showing you where that is housed and captured. Any questions? Oh. Eddie, uh, so, check, check, check. Check, 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 check. Um, and then lastly, yeah, you like texted. Um, and so lastly, I mentioned before, and I'll share it again, our capital projects, you see some changes there. Um, I talked a little bit how level in terms of what that nine point two million dollars and changes were. Just bear in mind that Mark Bentley will be here tomorrow, and he's going to talk with you more about the detail of what project is in thing, you know, within a lot of the CIP plans, et cetera, just to kind of give you more, um, color behind some of the numbers here. I think that's it for me. Are there questions that I can help with?
Any questions? Mayor Dyer is still on?
Still hearing your questions.
Okay.
No questions here from ourselves. I appreciate the information and all the additional details to be aware of. I was appreciative of all those nuances. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't think we have any questions.
Sitting down.
Thank you, Sherelle.
Thank you, Sherelle.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have, uh, council communications. This is a city council requested discussion item.
Kristal, this was a, this was an item that I know that, uh, Councilman Merritt was, uh, asking about. And, uh, that's, that's one of the main reasons we have Jeff Brady here, to see if, if he can be part of that, because I know it was-
Yeah.
-internal and external communication, so however, uh, you want to handle that. But I think, uh, Councilman Merritt really kind of wanted to just lead it off.
Definitely. Yeah, so, go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Brady, you know, Director of Communications, this is my first budget retreat, and, uh, I wasn't sure, based on this item, if it was something that I could facilitate a conversation or if it's more better suited for council members to discuss between yourselves. I have a presentation about what we do externally, uh, as a city, but I don't, I don't, I wasn't sure what you guys really want to use this time to do. So I can make my presentation, or I can help facilitate a conversation, or neither, or both.
Sure, no, I, I think my recommendation, and Council would love your, your thoughts on this, um, and David, is, um, for Jeff, for you to do your presentation. That way we have a better scope of kind of how we do things. And then from there, we can ask our questions. And I will probably start with, um, David, have you, and after the presentation, have you, oh, have, um, Councilmember Merritt start first, and then, um, we will go from there. But right now, we'll take a pause just to make sure that Councilmember Merritt is on.
Okay.
Until further notice from our AT team. He says he's reconnecting.
Oh.
I think he's trying to reconnect. I think he's trying, yeah, we're taking a little break until-
Oh.
And we can hear you, so-
Can you hear me?
We can. Success.
We've been connected again. Thank you, Jennifer.
No, you're fine. I'll just reiterate, um, Councilmember Merritt, we will, um, we asked Jeff to go ahead and do his presentation first, and then we'll have questions, and I'll probably start questions with you, since I know this was an item that you're very interested in. Okay.
Well, and I'll be brief. Again, I'll be brief, I don't know if really the, the heart and soul of the discussion is more to do with council communications or with what we do as a city, you know, external to employees and residents, I'm not sure, but we can go-
I, I would say it's both, Jeff.
Okay.
I'm very interested to hear what you have to start with, and then we can build on that, because I think that's imperative, because the messaging needs to be as crisp and clear and concise as possible.
Agreed, yes, absolutely. So, uh, but before we, uh, continue, I would like to ask, if anyone knows, um, what do you call a large reptile, uh, that posts inflammatory things on social media? You got it. Instigator.
Instigator.
Thank you, thank you. I usually get groms, you know, when I share these, some moments of levity, but I know that people go back and, you know, share these jokes with their family and friends. Feel free, I don't have to get the credit, use that. Uh, and we do have instigators in social, in social media, in farmers' branch, no names, but I know they're out there. You've got them. Uh, so, just as, uh, just an overview of kind of what we do, uh, from the city outbound, either to employees or to communicate with the public. Let's see if this is, do I have the right clicker? Scared of it. Or am I clicking the right way? I could just, you could just use the arrow. Over here? It's a short presentation. It's a very short presentation. Oh, now I have light. See if that works. There we go, okay. Peso, a quick acronym, those of you who are familiar with-
The Mexican dollar.
Exactly. It, but in this case, it doesn't refer to currency, it's an acronym that refers to four broad categories of media, whether it's, uh, no matter who it's targeting, okay? So just to explain it briefly, it's paid, earned, uh, social, and owned media. So in very broad terms, you can categorize any type of communication, uh, that is used in, in modern culture with these, uh, this acronym based on these four categories. And so here is how we break it down in farmer's branch, and it's somewhat self-evident, but just to explain it in very granular terms, paid, uh, media is advertising, okay? So that's, you pay for it, and, uh, someone else creates it and distributes it. And we do, do some paid advertising, some paid communication, for instance, with the magazine, uh, digital posts, uh, we have had radio spots, I don't know if the city has had, but they are, uh, out there, relatively affordable. And the topics that we would use paid media for typically would be events, if we're having an event like Christmas in the branch, uh, rentals, renting a space, stay at the historic park, et cetera, uh, economic development to encourage the interest in farmer's branch and tourism, so encouraging people to come, um, for hotel nights. Uh, the second broad category is earned media, and that's where you solicit news coverage or interest by an outside party to do a story or provide coverage of something that has to do with farmer's branch. So, uh, PESO, local and national news outlets, we had some coverage just yesterday, which kind of landed in our lap, we didn't solicit it, but it happened with CBS eleven, and so they were interested in a certain citizen who was making some allegations about, uh, the city, and we responded, had some, uh, great input from Leo Banano, our co-manager, uh, so that went on CBS eleven yesterday. We don't do a lot of this, and I can speak to that if we'd like to talk about it. Uh, basically, the reason is it's, it's completely uncontrollable. You know, you may have an idea, we may have a great concept to pitch, we may get some, uh, pick up from media, local or national, but there's no guarantee that they're going to cover or provide the story that we pitched. So, it's a little bit uncontrollable.
I have a question about that. If we have connections with certain media on certain things that we feel are positive-
Yes.
Would you prefer that we go through you for that, or can we do it in partnership with each other to try and do that? How would you prefer that we handle that?
Both, but let's have a conversation about it, because I have a real good idea of what they're going to want in order to make it a success, to make it a win. There's some, you know, very basic ingredients that news, whether it's print, digital broadcast, what they're going to look for in order to make a story, and so I can usually help-
Perfect.
-with the pitch. So I'd love to be a part of the conversation. But if you have some ideas, let me know. But the caveat is, the asterisk is, keep in mind, the story that we pitch may not be the story that ends up on the air.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, all the time.
It's great, but I, of all people, know it's a double-edged sword. And so, once you're on the radar, you know, it's great, it's great, but it's, there's no guarantee.
So then I would say it would be in our best interest to have you as our filter for those opportunities.
Yeah, yes, yes, I can help. Uh, and then social media, self-explanatory, Facebook, we're most active on Facebook and Nextdoor, uh, and I'll explain kind of how many followers we have on these, but, you know, the, the usual suspects, Instagram, Twitter, uh, and of course, these are just the, the platforms that I mentioned here that, that we manage at City Hall. There are many others that are run by city departments. So that might be Parks and Rec, it might be police, it might be others. And then, so P E S O, the last one is owned media, this is where we spend most of our time, owned media, and that is, but what I mean by that is media that we create, we come up with it, we write it, we produce it, uh, and we distribute it. So it's fully owned and fully controlled by us, so it's the safest, because nothing, you know, passes out of our department without the full scrutiny of our department. Uh, and we also control where it goes, where it's placed. So that would be F B T V, uh, even newsletters, which I'll describe and submit it, the video that we produce, and the print newsletter that goes out once per month.
Jeff, before you leave that, in, just in general, can you tell which of the four roughly, how many people-
Yes.
How many people are reached?
Yes, and just, I'm getting it, I promise. You're just jumping the gun, just a little. But that's a good question. So, uh, owned media, I'm going to jump right into that last category, the orange category, because that's where I, that's my bread and butter, that's where we spend all our time, uh, primarily. And so, under the digital platform, we have our website, which I would argue it is by far our most important platform to communicate with the public, uh, for a lot of reasons. It's about twenty-eight thousand six hundred website visits monthly, per month, uh, they could come from anywhere. Uh, just renovated, just relaunched the website just last month, so it's got a new look and feel, kind of a new skin, and we had a lot of buy-in, it wasn't just us, it was the whole city, all staff, members in every department was involved in recreating and kind of purging old content and making sure it's, it's relevant and the best we can do so. That was just launched last month, it, of course, we update it daily as required. Uh, global reach, you know, there's no zip codes on the internet, so people can find us from anywhere. Uh, and then also in the digital category for owned media, our two newsletters, we have two that we produce, as most of you know, one is designed to go external to the public, residents, and then one is internal for employees. So the Branch Bulletin is our, uh, external to residents of the farmer's branch. Uh, it is every Thursday, goes out every Thursday, it's using Constant Contact as our platform. Approximately sixteen thousand seven hundred people, uh, receive the Branch Bulletin, uh, that's apartment and homeowners. And it's, you know, I, I just want to say that I have only been in this position for less than a year, but I really am the beneficiary of the work that went before me, because this is really an award-winning department. And so my predecessor, Tom Bryson, did a fabulous job, and incidentally was president of some of our professional organizations. And so if you come back to the, the communications department, you'll see a lot of trophies and awards. So he, he really set us up for success and did a great job in terms of recognition and doing what we do quite well. Yes, sir?
Jeff, with that sixteen thousand whatever per month, can you, have you tracked month over month growth since you've been here?
Uh, I, no, no.
Will have those numbers stay static, or we just-
Pretty much, well, what we've done-
We haven't been able to measure the month to month?
What we had done is tried to purge the list, uh, so that we eliminate redundancies and without sending it to blank or to, you know, dead email addresses. So there's a purging process of getting rid of the old bad emails. And then we also have s- about ten different lists that have been created over time, uh, and we usually distribute to about three or four of those, which have the majority of the subscribers. So what we're doing next is, uh, kind of combining those, merging them in as part of our purging process. So what we're doing next is kind of combining those, merging them in as part of our purging process. But no, to answer your question, I don't have a track of whether or not that number has gone up in recent months. If anything, I think it's gone down a little bit, because we purged the old, the bad emails.
And those groups that you sent it to, are they nonprofits, or they...
Well, I understand, there are several lists. One is the Parks and Rec list. One is a list that was compiled by an agency that we employed some years ago. And so, they're valid, they're good, but to get that sixteen thousand seven hundred number, we combined about two or three lists. One is a library list of subscribers, you know, who were involved and came into our email list through the library, through a library membership, so...
And also, all that sixteen thousand doesn't mean they're necessarily Farmers Branch residents.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, and with the, I know with Constant Contact, because I work with them a lot too, those analytics are really easy to see, and so you can see the movement, you know, on those lists every time they send out a, every time they send out a newsletter.
Yeah.
You can see how many fell off, and I mean, it's pretty, that's why I've always liked Constant Contact.
Yeah, it is very helpful. And we get people who are adding, requesting to be added to the list every week, and then others that are kind of bounce backs that we need to purge. So it's an evolving list on a daily and certainly weekly basis.
I would just think with the residential growth in the city, that number would tend to go up.
Well, it should, and so...
Yeah, so they learn their way around and get involved and want to know what's going on.
And so what we have done, what I have tweaked is the format and the way we compose the content. So what I've tried to do is get some feedback from recipients and some of the members of our team, our internal communications team, about how we present information. And so I wanted to kind of go slowly and take a deep dive and read format, just tweak the newsletter so it's more digestible. And I don't want to get into a long conversation, unless you guys want to, but the number-one problem in all communications, I don't care if you're Frito-Lay, or the Democratic Party, or whomever, the number-one problem is we're all inundated in content. We don't need more. We don't need another app, we don't want more emails coming at us. So people have by default, delete, negate, deny, hang up, don't answer the phone, delete, delete, delete. So that's what we're up against. The good news is, we're everybody else. Every brand has the same issue. So, my thought is, we need to be really judicious and smart about what we deliver, and make sure it's relevant, make sure it's timely, make sure it's appropriate, make sure it's, A, what we want to say, but deliver in a way that is palatable and acceptable and of interest to our intended audience. So, it's a long-term process, and I'm going gradually, but my intent is to refine these newsletters. And once I'm happy with the way that they're configured, and it's concise and appealing and approachable and digestible, then to have a campaign where we really try to grow that knowledge. Because, as we know by the census, and I'm going to get to this in just a minute, that's not good enough. You know, we have a city of fifty thousand people, so this is, we're not reaching enough, in my opinion, with this. So, anyway.
That, on your website, where you have the subscribe, is that what that's for, is to add that to that?
It's one way.
Is it adding...
It's one way, yeah. But again, we're not, I mean, I, you know, don't get me on my pulpit, but we're not, we're not reaching people. You know, we're not, I consider, I think we have really important information that's relevant, more relevant than any other level of government, because we're dealing with people where they live, where they work, right here. So I kind of feel like at the local level, we should be more in touch and have a better dialogue with our residents or constituents than any other level of government. And we're falling short. So I'm aware of that, and we'll get to that in just a minute. Anyway, Branch Life is our internal newsletter where we reach employees, hopefully. Every Wednesday, so it goes out Wednesday, and the Branch Bulletin goes out Thursday, every Thursday. Again, Constant Contact, approximately four hundred and fifty recipients, employees of the city, not total, but that's the number that we deliver to. So, and that's not, you know, good enough. So that's digital. Farmers Branch owned media. Our print platform, as most of you know, is a once-a-month print newsletter called The Branch Review. It's a, like I said, it goes out once a month. It's printed and distributed in the city water bill, which there's three mailing cycles. It also goes out in a branded envelope, sent to apartment residents, because they don't pay the water bill, it's paid by the apartment managers. And of course, it's also distributed in City Hall and other city facilities. So if people want to, they can pick up one, you know, by hand, wherever they may go.
So I have a question about that. I received some inquiries that some apartment dwellers are not receiving the envelopes in their apartments. Have we confirmed with all of our apartments that their residents are actually receiving the envelopes, they're actually receiving our newsletter?
I have not conducted a survey, if that's what you're asking, I don't...
Are they distributed through mail, or are they distributed through the mail service? So we're not like dropping them?
They're, they go to homeowners in the water bill.
Right, right.
If instead you live in an apartment, we have a branded envelope, which says, you know, City Hall, Farmers Branch, that is supposed to go to each and every apartment resident.
Have we advised, or how do we get the addresses for the apartments?
We contact with a mailer, a commercial mailer.
There is a mailer, yeah.
Okay, because we know that in the past, if you go occupant at apartment two, it's not, no one will open it. So we have, we have contacted the commercial mailer that supposedly keeps up with all the current addresses, and that's who we use. Now, if they're missing a brand-new apartment complex...
No, this is more of an existing one. So I think, I think we may need to look into that, just because I just want to make sure that all of our apartment dwellers, whether it's a new apartment or an older apartment, receive them.
I agree.
It may be an issue of them not distrib, you know, the apartment owner, you know, get it, receive them.
I get one, that's true.
Okay. So I get one too, and that's one of the first ones I asked about whenever I came in, like are apartments getting them, and I get one too as an apartment dweller. But, but I think we need to look at some of our older apartments to see if that may be an issue, like Ventana, Cooks Creek, there's some of smaller, you know, like very smaller apartment, just to make sure that they receive them.
Right. So again, so my focus, well, quite frankly, since I started, my focus has been this website overhaul.
Yeah.
Because it's been a big project.
Definitely.
And I've also been slowly tweaking and kind of looking at how we can frankly condense or consolidate the information we distribute in these emails, because, you know, like I said, we're all trying to limit what we see. And if you open up a newsletter, whether it's print or digital, and it's just a block of text with no pictures and no indentation, no one's going to read it. It's the first thing you chomp in the mail. So, and yet it may be very, it's usually very important, relevant, timely information. So, we have to get smarter about how we deliver information, and maybe it is, the primary platform is the website, and maybe what we send out electronically or on paper is just a couple of lines that would be a tease, an graphic image, and then they link, then they hit the link and go to the website to read the full article. So that might be, you know, we're looking at that. Also, the city can and has targeted homeowners, incidentally, this is not, it's not the same. One of these numbers is, I think that first number I showed you is a little bit off, because they're not both sixteen thousand seven hundred. But regarding apartment owners, the city can and has targeted homeowners and apartment residents with additional notifications. We can do that if there is an issue that rises to the level of importance, like something that has to do with code enforcement, citizen surveys, the budget, perhaps, if we really want to make sure people are aware. We can target residents with an individual mailer, that would go out on the same distribution list as we have for the newsletter. And again, it goes out once a month. And again, this one too has won multiple awards from three CMA and TANIA, that's Tom Bryson, he's done a great job, and so we really are a well-running and efficient small department. Our broadcast platform, again, owned media, what we control, we produce, we distribute, most of you know, is F B T V. It's a twenty-four-seven broadcast, and of course, Kevin is closely associated with all we do on F B T V. It goes out on Spectrum Cable, channel sixteen, A T and the U-verse, channel ninety-nine. We have Council Countdown, it's the program we tape before every council meeting, and it plays before each city council meeting, and also before each city council meeting replay, as an overview of what the council is about to address, topics and whatnot. We also, of course, broadcast the city council meetings live and with replays. F B T V News Extras, these are news stories on topics of municipal interest, so you may have seen some of these. We did one on the Metrocrest Services and their fiftieth anniversary, we did one on the Fishing Derby, so things like that, which, you know, we need to crank up and do some more now. And again, multiple awards for video segments from three CMA and TANIA. So you've got an award-winning department, and I'm trying not to change too much, because it's, it really runs well. It's an efficient department. Social media, Charles, to get to your question. Facebook, we have approximately forty-three hundred followers on Facebook. Nextdoor, this is where we reach the most people, and what's better about Nextdoor is it really is G O S targeted. So we know that these people are, almost without exception, within Farmers Branch. So when we post something on Nextdoor, or when we see a conversation that's taking place on Nextdoor, we're relatively certain these are Farmers Branch residents. Twitter, about twenty-eight hundred followers, we're not as active on Twitter. And Instagram, approximately, approximately two, two thousand followers. We have gotten better, and I'm going to bring this up in just a minute, but we have gotten better in recent months about trying to create posts that we duplicated Spanish as well as English, because we all know, you know, what's happening with our demographics, and the census is going to, I think, tell us where we're headed, demographically. Farmers Branch paid media, I referenced this earlier, so Peso is paid, right? External only. This is advertising. We do do some advertising, not a lot, because it is expensive, but it's only used to reach external audiences, as I've said before, to promote special events, like Christmas in the Branch, or Bluegrass Festival, to promote Reynolds and the Historic Park, economic development, or to get tourism people to come to a soccer tournament, or to, you know, a Fourth of July event that we're having at Farmers Branch. The majority of these paid campaigns or paid search, we do a lot digital, is the bulk of our expenditure here. S E O campaigns, so people will find us when they're Googling, as well as paid social media posts, and some print campaigns, usually targeted magazines, like D Magazine. And that might be for, again, economic development, tourism. Opportunities to improve. And this is, again, I've been in this position now for quite a year, but I think we do, we do have some areas where we can and should look to improve in communications. One, as I said before, the latest census indicates Farmers Branch as a city of approximately fifty thousand, could be a little bit north of that, a little bit south. At best, our outbound media reaches a combined total of approximately thirty percent of residents. Now, to put that in perspective, that's not bad for a municipal government. All municipal governments are struggling with this. State governments, anyway, is struggling to reach more people. Just like I said, everyone's inundated, no one necessarily wants to hear a message, whether it's print or broadcast or digital from the government. But, this is not enough. You know, so we need to, we need to find a way to extend our reach, and I'm looking for ways to do that. Relevance. Are the topics and subjects that we address of interest to Farmers Branch residents? Well, maybe not at first, but it's my job, it's our job, to make them so. So to package it in a way that it's of interest, that it seems relevant, and that people consume it. So that's what, that's what we're looking to do, looking for ideas there. Are the terms we use understandable to Farmers Branch residents? Maybe, maybe not. We need to limit our government speak, you know, and talk more the way normal people do. Trying to work on that. And are the people we use as spokesmen relatable, clear, communicative to Farmers Branch residents? Are they reflective of Farmers Branch citizens, age, race, gender, language? So we need to look like and speak like the people who live here, just make sense. But sometimes we kind of get in an echo chamber, you know, and we talk to each other, but we don't think about who we're really trying to reach. It's the same thing with the news organization, frankly. Any language. I think this is huge, huge. According to the latest census data, more than, correct me if I'm wrong, more than fifty percent of Farmers Branch residents now speak Spanish, either exclusively or in addition to English. Is that fair?
That is correct.
I think so. So, only a small fraction, less than one percent of our overall city communications are translated into Spanish. That's not good enough. So we need to do better. So I'm looking for ways to translate and do more in Spanish, so that we reach people and we communicate with them, not exclusively in Spanish, but in addition, in addition. So. Opportunities to improve. So, in summary, we've got a well-established multimedia channels. We have an award-winning history, thank you, Tom, my predecessor, although, we just won two tellys, my term, two tellys, so that's coming. You'll hear about that maybe at a city council meeting. But are the efforts as effective as possible? Probably not, continuous efforts to improve. So, there's a lot more that could be said, but that's all I have for now. I can expand on any of this, or we can open it up to your questions or comments.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. I think we'll go ahead and open it up for questions, and I think we'll go ahead and get started with Councilmember Merritt. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Jeff, if I may, bring you back to the podium and ask about the management of the social media. There was a slide that you had that referenced that the social media, Facebook, Instagram were managed by the departments. Are you looking perhaps to have some sort of, I wouldn't say control, but let's use oversight in that particular approach to manage the messages, or tabulate the messages, and the distribution, et cetera, of those?
Yes, there, we manage, I directly supervise what we post and the messages that we distribute on social media channels from City Hall. And so, we, I oversee most, almost all of the posts. I don't know, we're looking here, or we're here. I feel like I'm looking here. But I oversee most, all of the posts in English and in Spanish that come from City Hall. And we have a great contractor who helps us now, who is from Farmers Branch, she's a native citizen, she's bilingual, she's young, she's perfect for us to help deliver, you know, create and deliver those messages. Now, however, that's just a fraction of the bulk of all social media footprint, of the umbrella that we cast, because we have social media platforms and channels at the police department, at the fire station, within tons within Parks and Recs, and different divisions within Parks and Recs. Maybe the Historic Park has a channel, or a Facebook presence. Maybe Christmas in the Branch has a certain one during that time of the year. So it, with a department this size, it is virtually, it would be impossible for me to supervise all of that. But, now, again, now that we're done with the website overhaul, one of my next projects is to get everyone together. We've purged the list of websites and managers from all the departments, so now we know who's authorized to be posting, who should be posting, and all the department heads have agreed, yep, that's who I have to manage my Twitter feed or Facebook posts. And what I'd like to do is get those people together once a year, perhaps, for continuous training, for best practices, and maybe bring an outside consultant in to talk about, you know, here's what's trending right now, here's what you should be doing on Instagram, here's what's most effective. So, there's room to grow, there's, and so, I'm not sure, Councilmember Merritt, if I have answered your question. I do supervise what we post at City Hall, but beyond that, the wider umbrella? No, there's no way I could possibly oversee every post by every department.
No, and you've, you've addressed the question, and it is, it is broad, and very broad. I think the idea that you have suggested of bringing together those, I'll call them official posters, if you will, and making sure that they have the operating parameters, using a wide term, to dis... What they can post, what they should post, how frequently they post. We've got so many, and you talked about the challenge that we all have, there's so many ways to get information. We can either push it, as we do, or we can have it pulled, as we also do. But we have to get the right balance, and it's not easy to do, and that's the challenge that we all have. The reason I brought this conversation to the table here today, and I thank the administration for bringing, allowing it to be a discussion, is I think it's really important that we all have our districts to serve, while simultaneously, we all serve the city. And I think it is very important that we have the right message, consistent message of baseline, what the city council is doing. But I also think it is important that we have our own perspectives, and that's an interesting balance to try to achieve. So, the fact, I've seen other cities have an opportunity for their council people, Dallas as an example, to have their city councilmen and women there have the ability to have their own webpage where they can post information to their constituents. And I know in conversation with all of the council, we all have a desire to keep our constituents informed from our perspectives, what is important to them, which may not be valid... Um, from our perspectives, what is important to them, uh, which may not be balanced by what is, uh, the direction of the entire council. So it's the opportunity to have those perspectives in a centralized place where it's uniform. Uh, I think would be interesting, I, I don't have a solution. I, I wanna be clear about that because I'm only one member of this council. But I think it's important that we all have the ability to speak our piece, um, and communicate the positive things that are going on, or the important events that are going on, or the important subjects that the council is tackling. I think it's super important to do that, but if we do it independently, I think we're not doing ourselves any favors. And that's the issue that I'd like to at least put out, it is, it's not meant to be adversarial. And if it's being perceived that way, as I'm not present, I apologize upfront, and, um, but I think this is how a body such as ours solves problems, uh, puts them in front of the group and figures out what works best for ourselves to operate, and then separately, what is most beneficial for our constituents and our community as a whole going forward. So that's where I was coming from, and I appreciate Jeff, your, your overview, there's a lot to encompass. Um, we can repeat that from our own, you know, perspectives amongst our own social media groups, if we will. But since we are council members, and I think it would be worth looking at a uniform approach to putting that type of information, uh, forward. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Merritt. Um, I think what I'll do is I'll just go around, um, the room to see if anybody has any, um, questions or, um, comments to Councilmember Merritt, but also any questions for Mr. Brady, so we'll go ahead and start with Tracy.
No, I, I appreciate, uh, your approach, and I understand, you know, you have to kinda stare stuff that, the website was, you know, that's where everything should be referred back to, so that needs to be, the priority is getting it up and getting everybody in, relaunching. And I've relaunched, um, two of our own websites, I understand that it's just-
But now it's done.
meticulous, it's done, it's done, that's right. Um, and y'all have a lot more information that has to be, um, available on those websites, so, um, that's a, that's a gigantic site.
And we had a lot of help, every department, lady.
Well, it's, it's huge, and so that's quite an undertaking, so I appreciate the hard work on that. And, but I agree, um, this is just my two cents on, uh, the e-newsletter and with the, um, print, current newsletter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think what, what I have found to be more effective is, is shorter content, um, you know, there's only someone that, that someone's willing to read, um, you know, in a direct mail piece for sure, and then, uh, on an e-newsletter in that e-format.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think, you know, narrowing your, uh, your content and then just referring it back to that, uh, to that website, you know, I think that's, that's, I think that's a good idea. And I like the fact that you're letting your department hands, um, handle their own social media, because, um, I know it's, it's easy to get into that place of where you're like, you know what, communications on social media should all be handled from the communications department, uh, but then all you do is hinder the amount of content you put out. And when it comes to social media, it's all about more and more content.
And being timely.
Uh, and being timely, and so, um, I would encourage, uh, you know, from, from my particular, um, generation, um, you know, that, that content's much more, uh, accessible to me and, and more quickly consumed. Um, and so, you know, that's what I wanna see is, is more, um, of, of the timely, um, content for, for social media, especially when it has to do with events, um, but you can even do it, you know, we talked about, uh, with code enforcement, you know, education, you know, with code enforcement. That's a great way to do code enforcement, education as well, you know, where it's brief, um, and, and concise and quickly consumed. And it's that little, you know, it shows up in that news feed, and so, whether it be on Instagram or Facebook, now that those platforms, um, so seamlessly, well, I don't, I'm not gonna say anything on social media, it interfaces seamlessly, because it, it's all bumpy. But, um, you know, with it being that way, then that's just a constant reminder that, that you can quickly see in, in, you know, utilizing, and I think you've done a great job, um, you know, utilizing graphics, um, you know, utilizing that visual before you get into three paragraphs of, you know, content. So, um, I think the F, the FB channel on YouTube, I think that's an underused, um, you know, I, I know with my kids in particular, uh, that's a, they consume everything through YouTube. I had no idea that they, like, you've been on YouTube for three hours doing what? You know, watching, you know, four or five minute long, and TikTok might be another one, uh, where you can take, and you can produce one piece through your YouTube and then, and then quickly shoot that out to all of them. Um, but I, but I really like, I really like the look of your, um, of the FB, uh, channel.
Good, good.
It looks really, really slick, um, so I'm, I really like, uh, you have a really good speaking voice, and so.
Well, thank you, and a lot of it is due to Kevin Slater, he's sitting right in the back of the room, and he does a tremendous amount of work on FB TV, so.
It looks so good, it really, it really is good, so I think it should be, it definitely should be utilized more.
I think so, too, yeah.
Um, you know, especially pushing it back across to your social media, because that's the thing, a lot of people didn't realize, um, that I figured out, you know, while campaigning, and then since then, a lot of people didn't realize that they could go on and watch all of the city council meetings through that. And so, um, you know, through the YouTube channel, um, current, and with, I really like the ones like the seventy-fifth, um, the little short recap. We like that a whole lot, and that one was so easy to share.
Good, yeah.
Um, so, um, so yeah, I think, I think y'all are on to the right track. And to David, um, I understand, well, I don't know where to look here, but David, I miss you, I miss seeing your face.
(laughing)
Uh, you know, you and I, when we, when we first, um, were appointed, you know, you and I have talked about, about this particular, uh, you know, city councils, um, opportunity for, um, communications in particular, communications back to our residents. Um, and I mean, I have gone back and forth and, you know, should we look at doing a conjoined newsletter, um, that, um, but I really do think that with, with newsletters and e-newsletters, um, you know, if, if we have that combined with, you know, what the city's trying to put out, I think you're gonna end up in that inundated, you know, overkill, and I think it's just gonna get dismissed. I think, I think it'll end up, you know, where, where they're just deleted. So I think, um, I like the separation because as elected officials, um, I think we should be able to give our own, um, uh, our own take on things, our own editorializing of things, and, um, and I think, you know, uh, I'd encourage all of us to, you know, utilize those social media. And I would, I would encourage you to invite us to your, if you're gonna do that with your, um, yearly with the, with the team, you know, do those, the consultations.
Oh, sure, about best practices, yeah.
About best practices and about, you know, uh, best contents and things like that, that, I would definitely be interested in, uh, attending that as well. And I think, I think most of our, the city council would, um, we always like extra hints on, you know, how to make that Instagram post just so.
Because it changes, they change the algorithms, they change what works best, and so, it's hard to keep up.
So I, I'm a first-taker of that as well, so.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Lynn?
I'm not sure that I have much to add to this discussion, uh, Jeff, you know, you and I have both been in the media business for a long time. Uh, and I still am in it, because I own an advertising agency. Uh, I'm not about to tell you how to do your job. Uh, I do think that the communications that the city puts out, the Ranch View and whatnot, uh, are very good, they're informative. The, uh, insert in the water bill is attractive, and, uh, the problem with water bills is not everybody gets a water bill. A lot of people, their bills are paid electronically or somehow, and I have people say they've never seen the insert. I don't know how, but I would think that you get a copy of your water bill, but, uh, but in either case, uh, I'm not sure where we're trying to go, other than to, uh, enhance, uh, citizen engagement with the city. That's what it is.
Right.
And if we're going to do that, then the messaging obviously needs to be timely and relevant, you know all this, I'm not telling you anything that anybody else doesn't know. Uh, but we're fighting for space.
Right.
And, uh, this is, this is a continual battle, and as somebody who buys radio, TV, print, direct mail for my clients, we're fighting for a share of voice in order to get our ads heard. Uh, there's a reason I do not manage social media for my clients. That's, it's, it's too time-consuming and too maintenance-intensive for a small ad agency to do that and do it effectively. So I choose to stay out of that space, uh, for a number of reasons. But, um, you know, I, I think you're doing a fine job, and, and, uh, you certainly have the tools and resources that you need, so I'm not sure that there's anything else that we could do to, to make it more effective for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, well, um, going last, I'd probably echo a lot of the comments that have been made already, and I think this is a very useful discussion. And, uh, I think kind of as David kind of outlined, there's the part that, where we communicate with people in various ways, and then there's the city communications, which you went over very well, and I'm continually amazed, as, as you mentioned, Terry, that I hear from people and they go, well, I didn't know that, well, I didn't know that, well, I didn't know it was a grand opening, and I'm just like, I feel like you, the city puts out a lot of information, and, you know, there's people that follow the city halls, people that follow Parks and Rec, Branch Connection, Fire Department, Police Department, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I don't have an answer either how to, how to better our performance and our communication, but I think, uh, you know, you do a good job. Uh, one thing I try to recommend to people, particularly new residents, is to sign up for the e-newsletter that, that comes out on Thursdays, because I think that's very, very good, because it's not geared to one city department, and it kinda has a little message and usually a photo or some descriptive, you know, visuals there to get someone's attention, whether it's the frog pond or, you know, safety or stormwater, whatever it might be. Uh, but I think it's just very, very challenging for all the reasons we know that we're all inundated, we have a finite amount of time. And, uh, I would also like to learn from you, you know, best practices, um, and how to be more effective in communicating with people. Uh, it's, it's super challenging in our time, you know, where we have a constant twenty-four seven information overload.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I, I think sometimes I hear from people in the city, and I think they're in those silos. You know, they know everything that's going on in this department or that department, but they miss that kinda overview of, because, I mean, in our position, we know, you know, what's being renovated, what's, you know, all the things that, our amenities and improvements in fiscal structure and, and everything in the city, and in talking to people, I still see, I hear people go, well, I didn't know that, well, when did that happen? And I'm kinda like, oh, you know, how could you miss it? But, um, I, I don't have an answer, but I think we still have, you know, ways that we can hopefully work collectively to improve the messaging and the communication, and, and, you know, as we noted, to get the citizen involvement. Uh, and I think that, you know, as the city's growing tremendously, both on the business side, commercial side, uh, they wanna know what's going on in the city, they wanna be active participants, you know, and a lot of them wanna, you know, join groups and give back and, uh, support the city. And certainly our new residents do, you know, that we've got folks moving in from literally all over the world, and, you know, they come with their own thoughts and ideas and ways of communicating and sharing, and, uh, we just need to improve our communication, however we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think this is a useful discussion that, you know, we're probably gonna continue for a while.
Yes, for sure.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you so much for the presentation, um, I think that it's, you know, lots going on right now, and I think collectively we can try to figure out, um, the best way to assist you in your work. I'm a firm believer in, I don't, I don't like to get in the way of the experts, um, but I do agree in, in, in being able to give, um, you know, some, you know, um, being able, having departments have the ability to be able to communicate things out, because they are the experts in their own departments. And so, I agree with you, it'd be, it'd be way too much work, um, to micromanage those, because I do think they're doing a fantastic job. Um, you know, and so I, I think we are above, um, we go above and beyond when it comes to our communications, coming from working with other cities myself. Um, you know, I, I will say, um, Councilmember Merritt, you know, in, in, in working for the city of Dallas, um, you're right, they do have their own page where they have a council assistant that actually manages the page for them. We don't have assistants, we do, we're, we're a one-stop shop, um, but also, you know-
Charles could do it, Charles could do it.
(laughing) They have, they actually have, you know, two staff members that they, that they hire for each council member, um, and so we don't have that, but, um-
Not yet.
Not yet. Um, but, but, and they also, they also cover, you know, they have about one hundred and thirty, one hundred to one hundred and fifty constituents themselves. We have about eight thousand individually, so, so I think there's, but I think there's a lot to learn from that, right? Um, how we can communicate collectively for, to have a shared voice as council. Um, because I will say, you know, I was in a meeting with, with Mayor Dai, um, with a couple of other mayor pro tems and mayors, with one of our congresspeople, and they were talking about how some of them have a council that, you know, is unified, and some of them don't, and so I'm just, I think we're very fortunate that we have a council that is, you know, um, you know, unified, and we can really work together to get out a message. But I do agree that the messages do need to be positive, and, and because we don't wanna be seen as, as, um, as, as a council that, you know, doesn't not work well together, which I think, I think we do. Um, and so I, I do have some questions for you, uh, Jeff, um, uh, and, and more so some insights. So one of the things that, um, that you mentioned, um, earlier is that the census is, is coming out, um, our demographics are changing. Um, in working on a community needs assessment with Metro West Hospital Authority, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago and found out that fifty-three point eight percent of our residents in seven five two three four are Hispanic. And so we need to make sure to be mindful of the communications for our Hispanic community, and, and, you know, when, when Tom was here, I asked him to send me poor, poor thing, a list of all the communications, it was four pages front and back. We communicate so much on, on all different levels, and one of the things that we were starting to work on is how can we tier those communications and prioritize those that we need to start with to, uh, make sure that those get communicated in Spanish. And that's something that I think we need to continue to look at everything, to look at that list and start having phase one, two, three, four, and five on the types of communications that do need to be translated. And first and foremost, I think it's going to be the news, the, the newsletter that goes in the water bill.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I agree, you know, less is more, and, and I think being able to just have a one-pager, front and back, English on the front, Spanish on the back, um, with really the, the things that we think are going to be more, um, more important to our constituents. And maybe with a QR code where if they want more information, they can scan it on the QR code, because one thing that we also know in, in, in studies that we do at the hospital and with the city, when I was at the city, is everybody has a phone. So, and now with COVID, people feel more comfortable in all, from all cultures and demographics, using the QR code to get information. And so I think we need to take advantage of that. Um, so, so I definitely wanna work with you on that, and, and one thing, and this kinda relates to the budget, is, um, having someone um, in your office that is able to do those translations. I think that we need to invest in that. Um, I don't know if it's something that, um, we can, it can be within the budget you already have, whether we start with a part-time person for this phasing, but I do think it's, it's a priority that we need to have for our city as, as it changes. Um, and so, so that's something that I would love for you to explore and see if it's something that we need to add to our budget. I, I know Charles is probably looking at me like, I don't like to add people, but, maybe it's, um, a, a superstar that we already have within our city that's able to kinda do a little bit of both for us. Um, and so I, I agree you have an amazing team, and just what, what asset can we provide and use this time to be able to give you the funds that you need to be able to make that happen? Um, I do want us to explore the apartment situation, I wanna make sure that we, um, that we make sure that all of our apartment dwellers get the information, and then especially those that we know that, you know, over ninety percent, there are some apartments that we know that over ninety percent of them are Hispanic. So we need to make sure that they do get that bilingual, um, that, that bilingual communication. Um, one thing that I, I also mentioned this when we had, we had a meeting with the apartment managers on the west side, and they're very amenable to sharing information, because I get news, uh, news bulletins from my apartments all the time about things that are happening. The Sound at Cypress Waters sends us emails all the time, and I don't know how they do that, but I think it'd be worth exploring if we're able to send information um, through the news outlets that the apartments send to their residents, to all of our residents. So about the fire, our seventy-fifth anniversary fireworks stuff, I get things from the Sound at Cypress Waters all the time, and I know I never signed up for it. So I think they partner with the apartment dwellers to send out that information, and I think that would be a really innovative way to make sure that our apartment dwellers also feel, feel a part of our- to make sure that our apartment dwellers also feel a part of our community. I think we're unique in that a lot of them do go to a lot of our stuff. But I think just taking it that one step further. Sorry, Jeff, I have a lot. And then another thing, too, that I would love for us to explore is other cities have code enforcement. The cookies are here! So I've seen other cities trying to figure out what, how they leverage their social media. And other cities have a code enforcement Facebook group page where they put code enforcement information. And especially with the things that have happened, I think having a code enforcement page, just like Parks and Rec does, they put out, like during the fireworks, you know, during 4th of July, they put out, you know, on their Facebook page, hey, you know, don't throw, don't do your own fireworks, you'll get a fine. They do educational opportunities like, hey, it's summertime, don't forget to cut your grass. They do, the West Nile virus stuff goes through their code enforcement channel. So I think that would be another opportunity as we're trying to help Leo get information out on some of those changes, just to educate folks. And then we can share that on our own Facebook page. And they can get more followings about things that are happening around code. So anyhow, I will stop there because the other one is related to COVID communications. But anyhow, but I think, I think the fact of the matter is we're doing a great job. And I think we can do some little things to be able to just enhance our communications. But my priority in this discussion is really to ensure that our communications get translated. And I can definitely assist in any way that I can with that. But our demographics, to your point, are changing. And we need to make sure that we equally communicate to all of our different members of our community. So with that, I will, I will, I will stop. But again, I just want to thank you so much. And I don't know if you have any feedback or questions for us, but would love to hear from you as well.
No, thank you. Just to wrap up, I consider myself well-versed in media and newsrooms, but I'm still on the growth curve in terms of municipal government. And I can't say enough about my peers, the apartment heads here and who will be joining us later in the week because to a person, they've all been so gracious and helpful as I kind of get up to speak on how we do things in City Hall. So very grateful about that. But I do not begrudge, I welcome any ideas, suggestions. I love to hear those, help us do what we do better. So if you have other ideas after this meeting, email me, come by and say, because I think, you know, ideas are great and would welcome them. So Councilwoman Rotana, thank you. And I'll make a mental note, I'm remembering what you said, so.
Perfect, thank you.
That's one thing. Secondly, I am going to a couple of professional conferences later in the next month or so. So I'll be asking my peers, as I get to know some of the people who do what I do in other cities, I'll be asking them, how do you do what you do? What's normal in your city regarding maybe council persons, council members, and their ability to communicate to the public or Spanish translation and whatnot? So I'll be getting feedback from my peers and hopefully have some, maybe some feedback for you on a later date about what I'm learning about other cities our size in Texas and what they do. And we last note is that we are a very small department of two people, myself and one admin, who's marvelous, she's marvelous. Now, we have some great contractors. Y'all know Rachel Johnson. She's amazing. She does graphics that help us all. You know, she does much more than that. And Kevin Slater in the back of the room, fantastic contractors. But as we grow and become a larger, more robust city, there may be, I'm planting seeds for later, there may be a need to bring somebody on board who can do full-time translating or who can be a webmaster and manage this all-important website and have more of a handle on our digital media. So anyway, thank you for everything. I'm available if you have other comments after the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Jeff. I appreciate it.
Question?
Yes, Terry?
I guess you need to ask Councilman Merritt if we've covered his topic or answered his questions.
Sure, yeah, definitely. Councilmember Merritt, do you have any other feedback for us?
No, I think there's a lot in play right now. And there's a lot of good work that's already been discussed. But I think the idea of making sure that we have the best information going out as timely as possible. What I do see perhaps not being discussed, and that's not a fault here, is the way that we independently talk to our constituents. And we're going to apparently do that the way we've been doing it. And that's just the way it's going to be. And if that's the way it's going to be, that's fine. We all understand what that landscape looks like. So I just wanted to bring the subject up, you know, how we talk to our constituents and how we, you know, make that happen. And Charles, I'll be honest with you, next, in the next council meeting, I'll probably say if anyone wants to sign up for my website, if they will, I'll produce that in the, they can vote, votedavidemerritt.com and get more information. So if that's the way it needs to be, so be it. And we'll have those channels that are independent for our own constituent contact. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Merritt. Terry, did you have something to add? Sorry. Okay. All right. So before we adjourn, Mayor Dai has, quote unquote, left the building. So I will be adjourned. Before I do, Charles, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Just really, Amy, do you want to tell us about the details for tonight?
Okay, yeah, we're just waiting on room keys. We'll meet at 5:45.
Right. You know. Over in.
I'll text you. Check your phones because that's where I'll be giving you all your messages tonight. But about 5:45, there's a room.
Instead of like, no, instead of doing it down there, we have a room that's available. So they, they're going to set up the wine and cheese in one.
The big one? The big one? Tracy and I should have got that one.
We were asked to stay here. They're doing a run-through of the rooms and should be back here by about 4:15 or so, 4:15, 4:30. So we can just eat cookies. And they'll take us to our room, you know.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
But 5:45, we're meeting at this room down there.
So.
We need to know the name of that room.
This meeting is, yeah.
So what we'll do is, next steps is make sure that your phone is on. You have it on guard. Amy will text us the exact location of our meeting location for 5:45, at which point, we will then head over to our next event this evening. We will wait until, wait until we get our keys. Maybe about 20 minutes, we'll just stay in here and we'll go from there. But with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn us at 3:53 PM. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your evening.